Your drain, but then as I travel a few few feet, it's gonna solidify and it's gonna um impact. Your pipe is gonna stick on the valves, it's gonna stick on check valves. And it can drastically reduce the capacity of the pipe. And tho- those are the the main issues there.
These are examples right here. This is our system.
This is our system.
Yeah, so. This is what we face in in our area.
That this, the one on the on the right just happened uh. Uh, a few months ago, when we were again bypassing some influential side gates, so we could um. Properly maintain our our screens. And so at the wastewater treatment plant, we have. We have um equipment that removes the inorganics. We have equipment that removes the screens, that we we have screens that removes the rags. We have. Grit removal that removes the grit, that protects all the downstream equipment. But as a uh. A raw wastewater pump. A station in in a collection system depending on how how large it is, most don't have this this type, this this type of specialized equipment. That would remove the inorganics and and protect the pump, because as he as the impeller spins. Uh, that's that's the problem, right? The grit can get inside the the impeller, the the rags can wrap around the impeller. And that's when the pump stops working. Uh, next slide please. And so th- these are kind of uh some of the the problems that um. I've identified in. Pumping, pumping, and so uh uh as your wastewater uh service provider, we employ. Um skilled operators, skilled electricians to maintain the sewer twenty-four seven. And so um because it is a hazardous environment, they're on they're on call twenty-four seven. Uh, you can't just have one wastewater operator, you have to have two wastewater operators to respond to a a call. You have to have. A electrician, uh a lot, a lot of the um. Issues in a wastewater treatment plant, water and also a pump station are electrical in nature, just because of the. The the corrosion tha- that can happen. And and because of the corrosion, the hazardous environment. Oh, the we see the equipment doesn't last as long as as stated, and so something that 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 could be. Uh for a a potable environment, or it could be a twenty-five year lifespan. It normally doesn't reach that long. And so because of because of the the hazardous and corrosive environment. And and with pump pump stations um. With the reduced capacity, if if the rags plug up the lines, or if the rags or the uh fat one grease. Eliminate the the capacity in the pipes, you can obviously slide your home. And multiple homes depending on how how much water is coming down the pipe. And that's why you need a a fast response time to um. To solve problems in the pump station, so that that's usually um most um. Easily solved by having your own staff, you could easily contract that out, but then you you would want make sure that the response time is 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 available. Um odors, um so pump. Uh pumping agitates the wastewater, it releases the hydrogen sulfide and um it creates odors. Um and also from lack of oxygen, if wastewater sits there. Um oxygen depletes from the biological activity. And it goes septic or anaerobic and odors happen and and corrosive corrosivity increases as as the dissolved oxygen. Is decreasing the wastewater, and so that. That um can eat concrete. It can um, that's one of the problems, eat concrete pipe, you can eat concrete manholes. Um wastewater piping valves instrumentation requires preventive maintenance, any any type of equipment. Is gonna need to be able to maintain, and so no- nothing. Out there is. Maintenance free, right? Especially in the wastewater environment where you're trying to prolong equipment, you. We as a wastewater treatment provider, um we we employ employees to uh to do that service for us. Uh jamming um if a rag gets caught around um an impeller or a grinder, then it uh. Obviously won't be able to. Um do its uh design as serviced. Nothing lasts forever and and uh we're what we're seeing in wastewater industry is a lot of these vendors are are combining, and so obsolete equipment, and so uh your. Vendor could be the main service provider one day and. And drop the next day depending on on the uh the mergers that we're seeing there, we're we once saw a lot of pump vendors, and now we're seeing them. Being consolidated.
Uh, how did that affect the district as you guys are trying to find pumps?
It's it's a lot harder because um. We all our our pipes in in inside the the treatment plant are are usually ductile iron, and so they're. They're piped directly to the the discharge. And um as a pump will become obsolete, we have to change a pump. That might change it an inch and. It's it's hard to cha- it's hard to change rigid pipe an inch, and so we'd have to modify a lot of of. A piping to to accommodate a new pump.
Not just a bigger hammer?
No. No, so it's it's a challenge, and so it when we when we settle on on a pump, we wanna make sure that. We try to mitigate those o- those options. Um and then infiltration, uh we we are doing a lot of. Uh lining in our collection side uh side to eliminate the infiltration of groundwater, and that only increases the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. But also um. Um pump stations, grinders in general could, uh you could increase the infiltration coming into. Um the sewer pipe, which uh reduces capacity of the. Um the pipe and the treatment plant during a storm event. And um.
Quick, can you say so? In a hat, so whi- which which grinders are you talking about specifically?
Uh gr- grinders or pump stations in general.
Oh, yeah, and and so in a storm, they would get more water, why?
Cause groundwater could get in if if they're not um watertight, if there's uh seals broken. Or homeowners could pump directly into the into the sewer that we've seen as well, that during a storm event. Um if there's a high groundwater in in um the area, uh sumps will turn on and it'll.
Okay, so this is generally like some pumps being typed piped into a sewage sewer line, it's illegal, right?
It is illegal.
Okay.
Illegal, yeah.
Doesn't stop it from happening.
Fair.
And you know, when people have groundwater issues. Um I I'm learning that it's more and more common for people to just think, oh, I can just discharge down the toilet. Because it will go away, but in fact, you're compounding the problem. If you do that, it's it doesn't make it legal, it just. Doesn't also take away the fact that it happens.
Yeah, okay. And and also um. Not not only just in some pumps, but if. If lines aren't properly, if uh for laterals, for example, if there's uh.
That's true anywhere, anywhere in in the city could have some type of a leak and. Be it from above, that maybe you wouldn't notice it's seeping all the time, but. In a high groundwater condition, it would seep into the pipe and fill it up.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then um grinder specific uh be the the no flushing during repairs or maintenance. Uh or power outages.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So our, for the purpose of our discussion, we're talking about what should we modify our own ordinances? On what we allow regarding pressurized waste. And allowing pumps or not pumps within the city. And there are the three varieties that we've identified, so. There's lift stations, obviously is one option, individual pumps, which is another. And I think that, you know, one of the questions for me is really. What about when we have to get pressurized to deal with uh multiple pumps? Which is the the other question. So there's some proposed language uh in the packet. Of what we might. Go to, but I opened it up for discussion and.
Where did this language come from?
These are just various options for whether you wanted to prohibit or allow and how you could.
For these based on like adjacent cities, or are these just? Ideas that we came up with?
So.
They weren't in how, we we pulled these from other sources.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're. They're a little unique to here specifically because um. A lot of municipalities already have the lift stations um already in place and they. Own them and operate them and based on the discussion that you all had last time, that didn't sound like a system that. The city wanted to get in involved with, so. These were just um. Going based off of what we already have and kind of tightening up the regulations.
So legally, can we prohibit any of these?
We can absolutely say that we won't accept or allow the dedication of lift stations.
To the city.
Right, and the city does not have to own operate or.
Agree.
Um.
Can can we? Uh tell a home they cannot put in a grinder pump? For example. Legally.
Well. Right now, what we are saying is we're allowing grinder pumps, however. We don't allow non-gravity, so.
If you have the ability to have it, you can, you have to still tie into the gravity fit system, right?
Right.
And with backwater valve approved by the city.
Absolutely. So so. For grinder pumps, as long as you, so let let, okay, let's go through uh one piece at a time. So sorry, continue.
Okay, so let's start with lift stations. Are we agreed that we do not want to allow dedication of lift stations to the city in any way?
Agree.
Yeah, and that's already.
Yeah.
I think that was clear.
Okay, so.
This adds some additional language around it, but I thought it was good.
Okay, so that's not a contested point. So then the question is on individual pumps.
Well, before we leave lift stations, though, uh do we, are we thinking of going A? Or option B, where we have them all separated out?
Well, so A is really, i- if I'm understanding this correctly, Bree, the consolidated one doesn't give us the. The finite language that kind of prescripts each kinda.
Category.
Right. So do we wanna focus on B? You guys got the.
Gives us actually a better latitude.
Me too. Agree.
Is that funny here?
It's Jordan's funny, okay.
Hilarious.
So I would go, I would recommend B, it sounds like we're all on the same page, is that, Denver, are you?
Completely against all like having any of these, so yeah, we'll roll with that.
But if we can or cannot prohibit this.
I don't know, yeah, and I think the more detailed in this, so people can't go around it, the better.
I think the real question comes down to with pumps is there is a difference between allowing an individual homeowner. From installing something that takes care of a part of their property, like an auxiliary dwelling unit. And allowing a subdivision where all homes are required to have this. Because you, it is different, it is different.
Agreed.
Treatment facility.
So is your tone when you explain that.
Okay.
So.
I don't think there's really any question where we all stand on a lot of this.
So so lift stations, I think. Uh, the first two paragraphs I thought was were well thought out. Now, the the third one, any pressurized sewer discharge system which creates pressurized sludge must be connected to a gravity system. Prior to connecting to any city-owned operated maintained sewer line. I I guess I could use some more clarity on. On what that is saying specifically.
To come back down.
Fair, but. So you're saying you have to have gone up and then you can tie into the.
Cause it's gravity.
What I'm.
You have to get up to gravity.
Anything the city operates. Anything that comes into it has to be gravity fed, which.
Okay.
Because and the reason for that would be that the alternative is pressurized. Pressurized causes or leaves a compounding of of other problems. For example, what happens if somebody digs and hits a pressurized line, where you get a sewage geyser? So I don't think anybody wants to allow for that in the city.
No, but why is this in the lift stations? I I would say a lift station is already doing that. But I I didn't, I didn't, I don't see why you'd have a a pressurized sewer discharge system and a lift station in the same system. That makes sense?
No, I guess. So if I'm understanding, so the laterals would be pressurized is if we didn't have this link, could be potentially pressurized.
Could be potentially pressurized without the.
Other than that, this really just protects. All the way from your house to the street, from that portion being gravity fed. If I'm understanding this correctly, right?
So that it can.
So this makes make sure that it's not pressurized from the point of the grinder pump to the street, essentially, after as soon as it meets gravity.
But again, this is in the lift station section.
But but keep in mind, I think you might be uh reading it as the same, and they're actually different, so. A pressurized sewer discharge system is different from a pressurized community sewer system.
Uh understood.
And so the the discharge system in this language refers to. The pipes. Outside of the pump.
And and a list that are.
Still have. So there there's be a pressurized system leading to the lifts, or sorry, the system from the station to the homes.
Yes.
So the homes are gravity or pressurized to the lift station, lift station then lifts it up and ties it into a system.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what that's saying.
Could either be pressurized or gravity, and we're saying it needs to be gravity.
Okay, got it.
Gravity.
Okay, I understand now, thank you.
Is that a problem?
Nope.
Okay. So let's hear your next problem, Jordan.
I I'm just going through, I thought we were reviewing this.
You are.
Keep going. Why you always gotta assume there's a problem?
And even just options too, if you don't, I. One of the concerns was that we. Didn't have each separate system sort of tightened up, so this is why.
I definitely clearly.
Yeah, and so that's that there might be some redundancy and that's maybe on purpose.
It is, is there any reason in the lift station section? Um, I I think our old. Um setup actually had a line in there that required. Um a buy-off from not only the city on any valves or anything like that, but also on the sewer district.
So.
The sewer district needed to approve. The connection as well.
Still be there, right?
That was not specifically in this. Um pressurized or non-pressurized section of our city code, that's through um, we do have an ordinance in our. Um. A separate ordinance in our development standards that the. They have to have buy-off, but that's in our development.
Okay, so that's, I just wanna make sure that was still there, because I wanna make sure that. More than just our staff is looking at sewer stuff, because when sewer stuff breaks.
And that's at site plan or where, where in the.
In chapter eight.
I think it's in development agreements.
It's a challenge.
Question.
But we can.
Always asking.
Wait on, wait for a spot.
But if the city, if the council wants to add language to that effect to this sewer.
It it probably wouldn't wouldn't hurt to just say uh. See this other code for. For approval, so.
The the other one only applies in a subdivision. Like a subdivision application.
So who has to say that first?
Third one where it's.
Us or the sewer district. Or is it like a hot potato? Nobody wants to be bad guy, so who says no first?
Yeah.
Wait, so what?
They have to go to the sewer district to get.
Be sewer, yeah, make sure there's capacity, as far as like a a lift station or pressurized, that's already been decided for this sewer district.
But in regards to, in regards to this process, though, if all of our language tightens it up and says that it's gotta be gravity fed at point of entry into your system. That's kind of irrelevant to you, right?
That's what we wanna, and 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 subdivision. We would still wanna be involved in the development process, make sure that there's capacity and the and the lines getting to your right size, yeah, exactly, as long as gravity fed.
So all the language that requires them to be involved in the processes in our other.
But it's only for subdivisions, it sounds like, so we wouldn't need it for sure in the grinder pump section, or just to say that this whole section's applicable to the same. Standards that are view, I think.
Yeah, and anytime you're deviating from the norm, I I would like to have. Uh. A review of the the system to make sure.
Four that we're finding out.
Put that in for.
Yeah, it's important.
So, yeah, I mean, they're gonna only. They're only worried about once it gets to them. So um and is there capacity for what comes to them? So. Uh, the guy that would do those reviews, Steve Lamb, he is on vacation, so I couldn't get him here tonight, but um. I think it's fair to say, and I'll let David speak on this behalf, but. If we say it's okay by our code. And it doesn't affect their system, he's not gonna hold it up. So we can't rely on him to hold up something that. We may be concerned about, we have to put it in our code.
Oh, agree, if it if it grabby flow to us, that's pretty much all we care.
That's that's our our code cut, so we we think we have that in our code then. Keep interrupting you, so.
Listen, you know more about this than I do. I know that I'm against these things, so whatever verbiage we need, go ahead and figure it out.
You're against them, the the installation of them, or against the ordinances?
The installation of them, period, I think. The army taught me rolls downhill, and if you try and force it uphill, bad things happen, so I don't.
So you're a big fan of gravity?
I love gravity and mother nature, I don't argue with her, and gravity, I don't, I don't think forcing something that shouldn't be going uphill, uphill is a good idea.
You know, one of the key points I think is that uh when I was talking to Steve, but after our last board meeting, he said. Syracuse has long been known for a city whose. Policy was as long as there was other developable land that didn't need gravity. But the city was not gonna take on the expenses that are attached to altering gravity. And we're not there, but it sounds like there's some consideration of going there, and I hope God, cause.
Sounds like a god complex, you're more intelligent than physics, you know, like it's.
I'm not.
Not you in general, it's just saying, that's like, that's a thought process of like, I could beat physics.
We have built a rocket that gets us to the moon.
Yeah, it comes back, though.
So I guess you guys have lift stations, though, that that operate within your. And you have cities that do either take on the ownership or, you know, cede that out to. Municipal service district or uh special service districts and all that.
That there are cities that that all operate their own lift stations, as far as.
Um, I mean, we're not like reinventing the wheel by saying that somebody who has property and wants to develop should have options and availability to develop, right?
No, they're they're they're.
You know what I mean, I think we're kinda.
I think it's worth noting that every a hundred percent of those cities say they wish they didn't get in that business.
Well, didn't didn't uh West Point just come forward with a sewer study that identify all kinds of uh, it's like thirteen lift stations across the. Uh, the region that they were recommending within their city, I think they ratified it recently, that not.
That's not accurate from what we just got.
I have a colleague that I can share. But I could know they used to have five and they. Uh, take all five of the mob line and consolidate them to uh one, but they've got another one coming online, so they're saying.
So the study I saw, and I have a copy of it, it's in their note, their minutes from like a few months ago. Indicated that not just within West Point, but West Point had like four. Uh that was recommended within the study, and then altogether in the district that they had covered, which kind of was.
Like for a build-out.
Yeah, was included.
I think that's.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, but having them and liking having them are two different things.
But I also, I know. For sure, but I still am a proponent of somebody's ability to develop their property if they do associate, I thought you were in favor of farmer.
I I think certain pieces of property just shouldn't be developed, like they're not every piece of property needs to have houses on it. That you may have land that you can only sell to other farmers, it may not be viable for a neighborhood.
So we decide that as government, we decide who can.
No, gravity does, and in this case, gravity says this is maybe not the place you wanna build houses.
In every single area, I know, that's easy to say, it's not like a god complex.
Yeah, I guess you gotta put a pump station like uh the whole dis sewer district lower than that piece of property. So it's gravity fed, you know, to force places.
Okay, it's never worked anywhere, I guess.
Sure.
The the suggestion is is that. Uh, maybe it's not fair to the rest of the taxpayers to have to pay that burden.
So put a special services district and have the assessment apply to those people.
Um, we're not talking.
Well, so so.
Special services.
I think the lift station, that that's what we're saying.
Yeah, I'm saying the ordinance allows that.
Yeah, the lift, so. So if someone came with a lift station and was going and create a service special service district, our code allows that.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it's not our preferred scenario.
Sure, but where gravity is available, our by all means.
Our our code allows for this, we're we're tightening up the language to make sure it's clear.
Let's be clear then, as a special service uh is that just, we are completely hands off from that? So if there, but what, how does that impact you?
We won't take a a pressurized sewer. And so if if you if you guys choose to develop a piece of land that needs a lift station.
They would have to lift it above gravity and drop it down.
Again, we don't.
Division up, is that what we're saying?
No, you could you could go through a a a lower pump station, a central pump station, and that pump station would get.
Talking about a lift.
Yes.
So in in this, so this for this.
So you will only receive it once it's hit gravity.
Yes. Which are our. Which is not a bad plan if we were to say the same proceeding. Because at that point, if somebody wants to create a special service district where they. Have the ownership, but again, I think that if we do that, we should make sure that our code is clear. That they, that it's airtight, but it we don't. Because what's happened in other districts, and this has happened in other cities in our district. Is that somebody said, well, we'll be our own service district. But it's gonna be managed by an HOA, the HOA failed, and they said, now, how do we deal with this? So they dedicate it to the city. And the city ends up accepting it because there's no other option. What has gotten people out of that is the legal language to make sure that it could only be a special service district. If it meets all the criteria that it is taken care of, meaning they have to have a bank account, that they can't be bankrupt in a year, or. If people within the district say, I refuse to pay to lift the waste anymore, that it's now somebody else's problem, so if there are a. A. Independent district that doesn't have those financial risks. We don't have the issue either, because they're gonna take care of it.
I think we're all agreed on lift stations. I I I think we have the verbiage in here, the city will not accept or allow the dedication.
Of any of that responsibility.
I'm by no means advocating for these, I'm just trying to provide an alternative option that people should have the ability to have options if they so.
Which a special service district would be that?
Yeah, I mean, I obviously it would be the least desirable, I mean, I would even go as far as to say, maybe we need to identify areas that were even possible to be. You know, capable of having a special services district or areas, so we know that we're not bringing in. You know, there's even a cap- or a possibility to have. Ten thousand new homes come online that have a grinder pump or any of these things, maybe we need to identify areas that are below. Gravity area, and we can say these are the areas that we allow this, I don't know, is that possible?
I think they're all re-identified.
Do we have it identified, so we know what?
They're outside of the city right now.
Sure.
Gentile there on the south.
Southern gentile.
It's hard to draw it on that, because people could actually alter the the fill.
They could build up to be a point where they need gravity.
Yeah, and create that gravity system.
So where do we draw the line on on fill, I guess, or build up? Can we say, you know, if you're within X amount of feet, you have to be made gravity fed? Or is that.
Fill it or not, you know, and that may affect the plants when you review it, uh there's a couple of things they have to go through, one is wetlands, make sure they have a problem there to this flood plain. And they'd have to make sure that they comply with the flood plain, both both of those, if fill becomes uh concerned, it doesn't prohibit them from. Doing that, it's just they have to comply with regulations.
But that fill also creates runoff issues.
Yes.
So the next section has some interesting points that I that I I could use some some help understanding.
On the pressurized.
Uh huh.
Well, first, before we even get to that, I I was hoping we could add like a definition of what this is, or somehow. Cause I know the pressurized community service, so I assume that is a network of grinders, or.
Right, so um I didn't put in there because I was not sure if.
This is new.
The city want, or the city council wanted um to differentiate between the public. Pressurized community system versus private, and right now, we don't have.
I feel like we should differentiate between everything, okay?
But we're saying, or aren't we saying that there should be no public? Pressurized systems, so we don't even.
You think?
Yeah.
But I wasn't sure, because the conversation last time also indicated. Um, the council was not interested in privately maintained pressurized community system, so with developments that were. All of the homes or dwellings were on.
So you probably do need to differentiate between between the two, and then say, the you know, the latter is not. Pro- it is prohibited within.
Yeah.
We don't allow a public pressurized system.
So so we clear a public system.
That owned by the.
Could include a special service district.
Oh.
And a private is HOA.
Hmm.
So we would still have to allow.
Cause a a special service district is a public entity.
Sure.
Okay, so the public or the language that still protects us is that. Um, the city will not.
City ownership, yeah. Yeah, city owned is the key base, I think you're. Concerned with. You good with that?
Yeah, but but you can, I think what I'm hearing Bree say is.
You can essentially outlaw privately.
That's right.
Owned and maintained systems like HOA.
That's for that.
Well, there's reason to think about that, because we don't want to have the failover, what do you do when it fails?
I I especially think that HOA is is really susceptible to failure, because it starts with one. One group of owners, and they can be in within a year, every one of them could be gone, and and all of those agreements or understandings could be. Normally. Yeah, they do.
As far as service, there's a taxing entity. So, you know, they're compelled to pay to fund it.
Is that, so is the administrative rule three seventeen, is that what dictates or kind of describes the special service district that Utah? Administrative rule?
Yeah.
Okay.
And under that, they would, it would, they would be charged on their property tax, which means they cannot fail. By owning that home, they are charged for that service.
Sorry, that's the Utah administrative rule for sewer.
For sewer, okay.
So maybe we needed some clarity there for the.
The special.
Special service district. Okay.
Yeah, I like that. Wasn't as concerned HOA originally, but as a.
I know. I know, like, like I was an HOA president, I was awful on that.
Well, they're even discussing on the state level if HOAs have any power when it comes to uh. Um landscaping and stuff, which, yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. So we want to add, so we do want to add some verbiage in there defining special service districts is defined by whatever.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, I'm just reading.
Uh so I just had a couple of questions on the pressurized community sewer systems. Um, I love the first statement where connection to gravity sewer discharge system is possible, uh use it. No pressurized community sewer discharge system may connect directly to a city-owned, operated, or maintained sewer system. The city shall not allow. Any pressurized sewer systems inside a public right of way. First of all, those seem like two different statements. The first one, so if there is a pressurized system, how do you depressurize it before it hits the city?
You get to grab.
Dump into a gravity. Like your own gravity line. Okay, so you have a gravity line that then can feed into the system, okay? I'm I'm good with that.
Does that, so what about the the pressure? Is that, are we discussing these here as well, like the pressure valves that are? That are kind of mandatory to have there, because last week I think Robert or last time, didn't Robert talk about how there would be concerned around? Concerns around these not being in a right of way versus like along a property line or boundary line.
Well, he was saying if they're in the right of way, they're not marked with. Blue stakes. So what this language does, that's why there's a separate point there. Um, so basically these would have to be, they couldn't be in the road, they couldn't be in the most strip, they couldn't be the sidewalk. So basically all we're saying is. You can put these in your front yards as long as you don't cross a public right of way.
Unless one of those companies delay wire comes through. Like they literally just did.
That's what I was concerned about.
Everywhere.
Yeah, so was that still in our public right of way?
Yeah.
In that area? So yeah, so that wouldn't happen.
Well, they.
Yeah, okay.
In the utility, he's went to mature technically private property.
Oh, okay.
It's the back of sidewalks, public utility. Sidewalk, park strip, bro, that's.
So I guess I was just wondering. Resolve the concern around the blue stakes or is it still the same issue? Cause then it would be in your own property.
Blue state uh private uh any sewer laterals because they're privately owned. Still remain saying here, we could provide information if someone was digging. Where their lateral was stuffed into the main and then they can decide, determine where it goes from there. But no, their la- laterals are blue state.
So this does remove liability from the city, which I'm I'm okay with.
That makes sense. I just, I was a little confused when I read that one too.
Having a gravity lateral inside the right of way though uh makes it so that you we're at least gonna get probably about thirty feet. Or thereabouts uh on a gravity line, so that will help it to the right of way and then beyond that. You know, they can decide whether it's continuous gravity or or not. Allow enough dissipation and any pressure.
And that makes sense to you guys. I mean, I guess for you guys, it's once it hits the system.
The the lateral hit a by a perant hole, okay?
So then we say, no planned development, single family subdivision. Or a single lot may utilize individual pressurized sewer systems within each individual unit. Then connects to a pressurized community sewer discharge system. So we just said, no house can connect to this whole section's header. That, did I read that right?
They gotta have their own header.
Can we?
So, no, I meant this header. I I'm just saying, we just basically said, you know, no one can connect to to a community to to their. Pressurized sewer discharge system.
So you can have a pressurized system connected.
This can't pressurize into one system that pressurizes bigger into the.
Here's the other. Let me explain.
Yes, so yeah, help me understand.
What commonly happens is somebody has a pressurized system, whether it be individual or not. And somebody says, well, no problem, I'll dump into their system. Okay, so uh this is, this would be, I'm only adding four houses, let me dump into something that already exists and we'll. Make that pressurized. You cannot piggyback or you compound the problem. So this would outlaw piggybacking. Also, you can, the the smaller individual homes have smaller pumps, but maybe you can't get, if it's a big subdivision, they can't get to the. Uh farther away spot, and so they're gonna have a uh. Uh the community line be a bigger pump, and so the the community pump will come into a larger lot. Which is just kind of like a lift station. It but not, i- it's like saying, well, it's not quite a lift station, it's a community pump. Which is kind of like almost there. They they call low pressurized sewers, which is. Is the same thing is is even though they say low pressurized, it's still.
This particular section refers to planned. So something that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Right, so if someone is building new construction. But then 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 this applies.
As long as you guys can read it.
So is there a way for four or five houses to have grinder pumps that then? So each one of them has to get to their gravity individually.
The way that this would work is the only way you could do that is if they went to their own gravity bed lateral.
Okay.
And under that case, then they're now responsible, but. The suggestion is, and I think that it's been accurately proven, is when you tie into somebody else's lateral, now there's a question is who has ownership of the problem?
DNA test.
So.
Something that works here.
So what you want to do. So what you want to do is you want to make each homeowner responsible for their own system.
Okay.
Not a community system, otherwise you're just back to the lift station problem.
So uh so the implication here would be, there would be a. Gravity line running down the road that each house would have to.
Gravity feed into.
Into.
They would each have to gravity feed to the line.
Okay, where whereas in some of these instances that could take place, there would be a. A pressurized main that each of these houses would feed into that.
That may later gravity feed into our line, and that's not okay. Because because a failure of one now affects many. And you don't want to have a failure of one back up and cause a biohazard in multiple residences.
So.
Had a thought.
So on that, I'm okay working through that. Um, do we want to put to put the same stipulation in? Because that design does exist. So someone could come in and say, well, it's not a lift station. And um. Do we want to say, look, you if you want to do the larger grinder pump? Use same thing, that now now it's a a a special service district again. I'm just saying, do we want to allow a stipulation for that, but they have, it's a special service district that has to be maintained?
That's the next point, but do we want?
Okay.
I guess that's great. Best question.
I think that's the only way you want to allow it is to make sure that it's funded only by those who.
That's not, yeah, I I agree with that. I'm just saying, do we, if we're saying we don't want that, uh there, it cannot happen regardless, pressure to pressure can happen, right? But then we're on the next point, it looks like it's saying. If you had a special service district.
It seems like those two conflict.
Is that, am I reading that right? Cause it almost seems like we're saying, but you can do it if it's in a special service district.
Yeah.
These are just options, so you tell me.
Second to last, not the last to say this can't happen, right? Cause then you're. I mean, even if it happened within a special service district, doesn't mean where you think it's an appropriate use, something we're saying.
I I would just. Delete the third bullet point and go with the last and say, look, the only way to do this is with a special service district. Because if you say, well, you you can delete it, but then you're you're back to lift pumps being the option. I I guess the question.
Oh, okay, so you're.
Taking out the thing, yeah.
You say, sure, you can take it out, but now instead of providing the the smaller grinder pump, now you said. Look, the only way to do this is lift station, which we, I think we hate lift stations more than grinder pumps.
But couldn't a special service district still have, still allow for a a series of grinder pumps? That have to just feed into gravity laterals?
Sure.
So they'd still be able to do it without having to go to the lift station, but you're just saying in certain circumstances, they might have to just go.
Why, why not just say that instead of, if you delete that last bullet point, then. You're just saying, you you can say, don't ever do that, you you can never do it.
What are your legal thoughts, Miss Bree?
That's.
So the the last one gives us this, the special service district district option. Do we want to just remove that altogether or do we want to mention that? I mean, it's one or the other, right?
But what I want to do is, I guess, which is a lesser of two evils? Would you rather have some small grinder pumps or a lift station?
Neither.
There's a, I think you don't want the expense of either problem.
Okay.
We do currently have grinder pumps still operating within the city.
And they're individual people's problem, which is okay.
I know, and that's.
That's the next section.
We're still on the pressurized.
We're on pressurized.
So so let's choose three or four, third bullet or fourth bullet.
I think you could probably find it a little bit.
Yeah.
Just uh eliminate uh one of them. So let's say if you eliminate the third bullet point, but you keep the part where it says uh. Single family subdivision or single lot and put that, add that to the fourth bullet where it says planned developments. Single family subdivision for single law may not utilize this all pressure sewer.
Without, without these specific things.
That's, you could probably do that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, the big thing is we're trying to keep the the city out of the. The.
The business.
The 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 business of lifting.
Poop.
Solid waste, no.
We want to avoid.
Waste water.
The cost of repair, we want to avoid.
Yes.
Employing special workers that have these skills, because we do not right now.
Agreed.
Which is nice. We we want to leave that to the sewer district, not to us.
Yeah, and 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 I think we've made it abundantly there. HOA is not a good enough.
No.
Okay.
Grinder pumps.
Good with that, with that change.
First bullet's great.
Um. The first bullet I actually want to talk about, so there shall be no grinder pumps utilized in buildings where connection to gravity system is possible. What if um? For example, I've heard of houses that put grinder pumps when they have a basement. So this this one.
That's different because it's.
That's that's covered down below though, isn't it?
Yeah, well, it is. It's already in our thing where it says unless it's, you have a sewer fall like in the the levels too low.
That's already.
Looks like it's in there.
I I agree, just that first statement says. Yeah, they they contradict, because this one says, if your house has any chance of getting detected to gravity, do not consider a grinder pump. Cause it it's illegal.
You just got rid of that first one and then left the fourth point.
Yes, because these are just options.
So I think the first point.
Every section we go to is gonna have a little bit of contradictory to it, because it's.
So yeah, so when it says.
We can argue.
It's already, you already need a sewer fall and you need it to just maybe take it up to something you've already got connection to. So yes, we have that existing already in our city.
Yeah.
So second point makes sense to me. Issues are you guys?
No.
So how would we know?
Hey, I think I'm good with the rest of them.
So is this still leaving o- open to a special district?
No, you don't, this one is just in a house.
This is, if you have a house, and let's say you want to. Put in a basement, your house will didn't originally have a basement, but the basement is below sewer fall. You could put in a grinder pump in your basement. Yes, it is. I've seen someone export a house on stilts and pour a basement underneath it. It's exciting.
Oh, that's.
I saw someone put a house on stilts and move it.
That happens too. That happens too. Um, but in that scenario. If you wanted to service the basement, you could put in a grinder pump that would service the basement, even though the the house, it could be serviced by.
Gravity.
Gravity. Some portion and is.
And that's okay.
Some portion of the house cannot be, and for that limited amount, you could put in a grinder pump.
Amazingly enough, the easy solution is don't put a bathroom in that basement, but you know.
But everybody wants the washer and dryer or whatever, whatever it may be. If they put a some pump to dump into the.
So in regards to the third bullet point, how do we determine when that's appropriate or not? When it, I mean, it says if it creates a risk of of flooding, there creates a high sewer flow. Is that, I mean, can that be kind of determined at any point? How do we say that they can, or who who decides, yes, this is a go, or is it just? Anybody can do it like you were saying, based on a risk that they feel.
I mean, theoretically, you need a building permit, and there ought to be, that there ought to be some type of inspection, but I doubt the inspectors out there. Oh, do you have something, Noah?
Yeah, they, any, anything to do with funding or electrical would require a building. And they catch it then.
So we would say this does not have gravity flow, and then you're like, and this is super high risk, you can now put this in with a a.
Building, the international building code address.
So if when you're, if you're inspecting the plumbing and it's all going uphill, you know there's a problem.
Now that we've come to this point, after we talked about this last time, it while we were talking about it, it reminded me of this video of this. Girl who just cleaned out a horse stall, pushing that wheelbarrow up a ramp, and it all just came back on top of her, and I was like. I know this video somewhere, so I had to hunt it down. I sent it to a couple of them, so I thought it was funny, but I should have sent it to you guys, but that's not.
I feel bad for her, for planning, but I still feel bad for her.
I'm like, this, it just makes me think that this is what this is, it's just gonna.
The intent is to keep the city out of the liability.
I agree.
Yeah.
We don't want to have to impose costs on the rest of the people who did not.
We don't want to be the ones standing under the wheelbarrow.
That's right.
Or 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 put someone, a neighbor in in that position.
That's right.
So I think these are good modifications. I I I think as we we've kind of cleaned them up, I I think they're reasonable.
There was one other thing that Robert brought up was just like the discharge line that could be three hundred feet, you know, away, discharging into somebody's. You know, non, is that addressed anywhere in here?
Any pressurized lines would be allowed in a public.
Okay, so that's covered.
Yep, so.
And there was no issue on the boundary line piece that you had talked about last time as well. And you'd mentioned that oftentimes it's, you know, tucked on a boundary line or something, and that's not something we want to see.
Is that check valves or?
I don't remember, you know, all this technical stuff.
Can we put something in there where they have these in there and it's, because we're, it's already a them problem, but it has to be clearly marked, their lines. Like they have to mandate them mark them, like just in case if you end up getting one of these, we gotta know where it's at. Something has to go through your.
That's the problem is you can't.
If it's put in.
You can't make sure future people maintain that marking. I mean, that's a, that's a problem. I'm going through that problem with a. Personal property somewhere where somebody bulldozed my survey marker. And now they're saying, well, it wasn't ever there. Well, guess what? It was, it was paid for, it was permanent, and you took a bulldozer to it, so, you know.
Yeah, that does happen.
Impermanent.
Yeah, it'll still teach you.
So I mean, so it's, there is a point where you can say, I can't control it, let other people do.
But we can control it in our right of way, and that's why that last.
We don't allow it.
All right, so do you feel like we've got to a point where we could vote on an ordinance next time?
Uh, I want to read it first, but yeah, I think we could. But yes, I.
Clearly.
I I think uh we've had good, good discussions, I think.
Feel like we've just totally contradicted ourselves.
I know. Do you have what you need?
I just need the recording.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
And if we have future questions, thank you.
You bet.
Anytime, appreciate it. Um, all right.
There is a comment, I don't know if you want to recognize.
Okay, this is just a discussion for ordinance. All right, uh, item D. Discussion regarding proposed amendments to the city consolidated fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three.
All right, really quick, just a few changes. There's some wording changes in here. We've we've noticed that some of them used to say each unit instead of per permits, which is clarifying that. Oh. And then for commercial, sometimes they'll have like two wire lines, and I used to say per line or per unit again. So we're just saying per connection, I don't know.
Okay.
No fee changes, just.
Good modification.
Two updates to the impact fees, one for storm, one for public safety. These are scheduled in our IFA reports annually, so they're just going to be seen. Uh, according to that.
They indicated was the appropriate update.
Correct. Um, overhaul the. Um, overhaul the code uh for code enforcement fines.
I appreciated this assumption.
Yeah, that whole section I think we've used the entire time, right?
With a mess.
So we took it all out and consolidated the four um pretty straightforward views.
For a catchall.
It's very nicely done.
Yeah, and, and this also allows you to uh, I, I like the contractor rate based off acreage and time, so um, you don't have to update this every year from, it pays more to mow lawn. It's just, look, if, if we have to abate it for you, it's whatever we pay the contractor, you'll be paying that plus administration fee. And whatever you had to pay for compliance fine as well.
Yeah, fair.
But no, on the uh, on the, is it public safety of the eighty-four that went the
Eight ninety.
Ninety-four, whatever. So on that one, obviously, we're talking about this upcoming, but um if we were to, how did that work if we were to look at the uh be associated with an ADU and we wanted to make some sort of operation to it? But the IFA indicates this is where we're at. Would that just be maybe a new subcategory for ADU or how, how would that work?
Yeah, so.
To figure that out.
So the impact fee is
I know it's.
It's per resident. So I mean, you could have two people, you could have ten people. It doesn't clarify. We don't charge a fee based on number of people at, at the home or at the.
I haven't looked at the study in a little while. How do they determine the value of that? Is it based on the average size of a?
Household size.
Okay, average household size. So, so if we want, I'm getting, putting the cart for the horse a little bit on this thing. Spoiler alert, I'll hold off. Excited.
Okay, next time I'm adding a, a water theft fee for commercial and for residential fifteen hundred.
How common is this?
It's actually more common.
Throw one of those in there, please.
I'd like to recognize our public works director to talk about water theft because it has been happening recently. And I, you need to know, so.
Yeah, there have been several instances, especially with construction happening, that uh we found a lot of commercial businesses, either landscapers or uh crane companies or drillers, uh just tapping our hydrants in random places, sometimes at night. Um, and then the next day we get a dirty water call because they just stirred up a bunch of water in the system. And we had no clue about it, but we find footprints in the snow. Uh, we know that it's happening, uh and sometimes we're able to catch them in the act and sometimes we're not, but uh, for those of you catching that, we, all, all we can say is, okay, don't do it again. And, and here's the proper way to do it, right? So we have a meter designated at the shop. We now have both waters, build station uh where
Always ending.
Swipe their card and, and get watered like a gas phone. That's the proper way to do it. Um, so it's preventing, the commercial companies know better anyway, you know, they know they.
Do we give them a pretty hefty fine since it's a fire hydrant they're tapping?
Yeah, in fact, that's why the fines.
Fake an example out of one, the rest of them will stop.
Yeah, there's a risk to our drinking water system. If they backflow and contaminate our water system, that could create a massive outbreak.
I actually question whether this is high enough because it is commercial. They absolutely know better. They absolutely know if they're doing it in the middle of the night that they are uh committing a crime and um it has the potential risk of public health.
Would we be?
That should be like a ten thousand dollar fine.
The non-residential, uh, uh, excuse me, the non-commercial, it might, it might be residential, it might not, but just non-commercial. Just an individual goes, say they have barrels in the back of a truck or whatever, and, and they go use it, yard hydrant. And just start filling up from the RV station or, or for instance, you know, um.
Which is happening.
It, it's just uh to prevent those, and those are a lesser risk if it's they're not hooked onto a hydrant, you, you know, if it's non-commercial that.
So what is the, what is the mix of commercial and non-commercial that you guys have seen or encountered? Do you have any idea like how frequently it's happening, one versus the other?
Yeah, commercial happens pretty frequently.
I say we, I say we leave the residential on somewhere somewhat more reasonable because of the risk.
The, the reason.
Make this one worse.
I think it'd be a ten thousand dollar fine for commercial.
So the reason to have a residential fine is there are people who have gone to the RV station and fill up and then go home and water their lawn and to avoid charges, which is ridiculous.
We've had a movie that car washed too. You know, wash my.
Wash my car.
Here, it's all here. For that, it meant just to flush their, their sewer system in their RV.
So is any of it done like unintentionally, like not knowing that, or is there posted signs that say any other uses?
That's posted now.
And what does it say?
Violators will be prosecuted.
But I mean, like, cause when you say like somebody goes over there and starts washing off their car, if I'm I mean, I can see somebody doing that without like reasonably thinking.
I think the challenge, well, and we can talk about warnings versus fines, but I think the challenge is, is that uh, many people know that they're, that this is illegal and yet they do it anyway because there's no fine. And um.
I would never advocate for like getting rid of the fight. I'm just saying.
We are in drought. I mean, we've had a great wet winter, but we've had a decade long drought. If we don't take some of these measures to prevent this, we're gonna compound our problem even further.
Being in agriculture, water theft is a huge, huge thing.
Yeah.
These aren't high enough nearly, like the, the non-commercial should be fifteen hundred and the commercial should be closer, I would say ten grand. They're tapping fire hydrants.
They are putting this risk, there's a public risk to what they're doing.
Who thinks that's a good idea? Hey, don't worry about it. Wait till it gets dark and go tap that fire. Who? Come on.
If you're doing it at night, you know it's wrong, or you do it in broad daylight when you.
And you should be hit with a big fee, especially if you're commercial business. You know better.
You guys think? I, I mean, I could see doing something more heavy-handed than this, but maybe on a first second offense kinda thing, like maybe you start out with fifteen hundred and then you go to, you know, if there's an additional offense, cause right now it'd just be fifteen hundred each time it looks like, right? If it was.
Yeah, but.
Each time it goes up by an order of magnitude.
Where we take it to court though.
Yeah, I was gonna say we could prosecute them um for theft of services.
Yeah, but you always just wanna stop them in their tracks. I think a ten thousand dollar fine, like, hey, if you do this and we catch you, guess what? You make an example out of one company. You're not gonna have that problem again.
I mean, I don't.
I would need to look into this, because there's fines. Before, I don't know about ten thousand dollar fines.
Hey, just. I mean, what, how many people does it affect when they tap on fire hydrant? How many people does it affect?
Does affect neighboring homes.
Yeah, dirty water, how, what happens? Yeah. Hundreds of homes. I don't think ten thousand dollars is gonna have to be fined in that scenario.
You're, you're in, you know.
Once, once, once they know Bree is prosecuted.
She's intimidating, Bill. She, it's the quietness that she has, it's that eyebrow thing.
I guess.
Yeah. And that's what matters. That was my one requirement ever, like.
We gotta have one conversation for the record.
We're just saying fifteen hundred.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start this. We'll see if this is sufficient deterrent. If we, if this is not a deterrent, then yeah, we.
Right, or whatever it was.
Now there isn't one.
And legitimately hit him with the fine.
It's definitely bigger than zero. So Bree, would we pro, like, what, what determines when you determine prosecution is appropriate?
It's our discretion. It's at our.
So I think it's round two.
So that, so he did um civilly cite them with a fifteen on hundred dollar fine, and if that happened again, we can prosecute that as a class penis.
Or even if the guy said, I don't care, go ahead and find me. I'm gonna do it anyway. You could use that, that belligerence is a excuse to prosecute right there.
I feel like this is the lower the bar, lower the bar. Let me give you the chance to mess up. But then the second time, we're gonna be a chat.
We have not had a, we have not had a water peeing.
We've not had a water.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So this is infinitely higher.
Okay.
Don't, don't, don't sugarcoat it. You're not.
Okay, so, all right. So just in the, in the event of trying to move us on, it appears that we have consensus of three of you to accept the fines as currently outlined. So we'll go with that for now. We don't vote till next meeting if any of you wanna change your mind.
Yeah, okay. One, one other thing really quick, one clarification for the parking tickets, the fee reduction of twenty bucks. Right now it does say that they have to have a mandatory appearance at city hall to get that fee reduction.
I was in favor of having that moved to, it could be online. So there was just some um because everything went online when COVID hit. Um, and so I think there was um, there were some staff members that were still in, like allowing the electronic appearance as long as they were giving those um, who were cited the information that they would receive when they were.
Like if the court allows it, I suppose we could.
Well, and you know, having seen what has happened, there have been some things that have been really a blessing to people with online. I know having been to a court just for a parking ticket, that room was filled with people who had to miss work for an entire day. And a lot of those people were in trouble financially and were in more trouble financially and then lost a job because they had to be in court all day. And if you can just go online, I think that, that removes a, a level, a, a barrier to wellness, just in general. So I think this is a simple offense. It should be something they should be able to do online or virtually.
I agree. Nobody likes their day being wasted over a fine.
I'm not gonna disagree. I'm gonna agree, but I will note that, you know, it is a, something that we don't have to do is offer a discount for making an appearance. I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just kind of stating it for the record.
Well, the fact that they gotta go a little bit out of their way to make the appearance, I'm like, well, they're making the effort. We can make the effort too.
Point is, is that we have the chance to say, these are the regulations. Now you know. Uh, this is not a, Nick, you can't come back again and, and declare ignorance to the law.
And I think in a, correct me if I'm wrong, but on a speeding ticket, if you do like enter into a plane of hands, you actually pay more. Uh, you pay an additional fee uh for kinda showing up and doing the right thing. Cause I, I may have gotten a speeding ticket in Syracuse last, uh, two weeks ago and. No, but I'm just saying, you know, in that case, you actually engage in what would help you on a insurance basis and all that, but you actually pay financially more to to go that route. You get to pay for the class, get to pay for the plane of hands processing.
I think we all learned something through this. Thank you.
So if you make more money, I'm like.
I'd like to know.
So it's, it seems like everything's okay with this, so we're gonna move on to item P. And invite Noah to the table. We've got a couple of planning items to discuss.
I will say this is an audible.
The first item being requested by Ivory Homes. Agreement for Legacy Park Estates subdivision, sewer service on four lots. See, we're already into this again. Good night for that discussion.
Let me share my screen.
Yeah, we had talked about this on our last one, the option of not having any sewers, you know?
Yeah, so this is an odd one. Uh, is what's being requested is if you can see, let's see. Hersher's got a delay thing. Legacy Park Estates, if you remember Ivory is developing its by Legacy Park and one thousand west there. Their first phase, speaking of sewer going gravity downhill, goes down. Or not, yeah, it goes down twenty-two seventy-five south. All but four lots of that phase go down there. And um their second phase is basically all the way, and that goes through to right there.
Hmm.
Um, their second phase is not constructed, but the first phase is. And so what they're asking of the city, so we have an ordinance that says you cannot get a building permit until you have sewer. Makes sense. So is what they're asking, and uh Peter Gambrellis from Ivory is on the line here. If you guys do wanna ask him questions, if I love any of these details up, but what they're asking is they wanna get going on those four homes with a pinky promise.
No, it's not a pinky, it's a development agreement.
Watch your verbiage, Noah.
Good job, Bree. I was being a little sarcastic. Thanks for the correction. Be factual. Yeah, okay. With the development agreement, that says that they cannot occupy the home until phase two is complete and they have a permanent sewer connection. So it's, it's a little bit more than a pinky promise, but uh it, it lets hold them.
Sounds like a deed restriction.
Yeah, it holds them accountable through this development agreements, but uh, and the agreement does say that the city will not be liable for the homes if, for whatever reason. You know, that connection is invaded and they can't occupy, you know, it's not our fault. But they suspect, I mean Ivory says that they will have phase two completed, they anticipate prior to the completion of the homes. And they have submitted phase two finals uh plans to us, and so they are showing progress towards there, whether or not they'll make it or not, or how, you know, how close the two, past the finish line is a little bit unknown, but so it's up to you guys. It's a, it's a.
There is a risk, but you could have an unoccupiable house. It's just sitting there.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just wonder though, like, it's not our risk, right? It's their risk.
Their. A you problem.
Well, okay, but I, I asked the same question.
Yeah.
Because when this came up in staff meeting, I was like, well, wait a minute, who, who cares? This is a simple one, right? Except for, uh, it's not unheard of that developers in hard times make shifts. And if they make a shift and you have a vacant home that cannot be sold because it doesn't have sewer, what happens to a vacant home? It becomes a attraction for vagrancy. It becomes.
Broken windows theory.
Uh, well, you know, I mean, there is a risk, so I'm not saying that you need to decide based on that. What I'm saying is, I asked the same question. I was like, well, what possibly is risk? There is a risk. They could say, you know what? We just aren't selling the first division or subdivision very well. We're just gonna sit on this for a while until the market bounces back because we are kind of in a difficult market, so. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Why do they have to put the, why do they have to start those four houses? Like, is there a necessary reason that they feel like they just can't wait?
Well, the economy scale helps them build faster.
And have to connect that. They wanna connect that street as well. I would assume they wanna make twenty-two seventy-five.
Okay, but why do they have to build the four houses?
Long there.
Don't. They're asking if they can.
Yeah.
Pete, Pete. Probably answer it better than me, but I, from my understanding, if they wanna get going on those homes because they have people that wanna buy them.
But they're uninhabitable, so that doesn't matter, like.
He is online.
It expedites their ability to move in quicker, so.
We're gonna have to.
Yeah, okay, but I'm asking Noah.
Okay, let me, let me just answer. So the, there's two scenarios, right? We make them wait till phase two's done and then they get their building permit, which is, I don't know, four months delay. Or we let them start now, and then they will build the house simultaneously as phase two, and then whoever they're selling the house to gets to move in four months earlier, so.
They, they obviously believe that phase two infrastructure will be in before these homes are built. Otherwise, they probably. Yeah. What, what is the anticipated timeframe that this would be uninhabitable?
Yeah, that sounds like a question.
That it is.
So um I'll recognize Peter from Ivory Homes. Uh, we have a couple of questions for you. Uh, based on your reasoning and uh, and to tie me, if you could answer those two questions.
Absolutely. Thank you. Are, are you hearing me all right?
Yes, we are.
Okay, perfect. Um, so Noah, Noah went through it pretty well. Um, we are actually have made our second submission for phase two. Um, we anticipate that um, this will be the last submission, but um that will be pending engineering comments. Um, the idea of course is exactly as uh, as Noah explained it. Um, in particular, we're concerned um about lot one oh eight, uh where we would like to start a model home. Um, we believe that um in starting a model home, and we would hope to do so in the next few weeks. Um, we would not be done with vertical construction. Before we had finished phase two, we anticipate that phase two would complete uh probably in June. Um, just it's, it's a simple, straight sub. There's not much more that goes into it other than the roadwork, um and of course the utility, underground utilities. So the idea was get started so that they can be built simultaneously. Um, by the time that the home is constructed, we anticipate that the sewer connection will be made. And then we can have a uh, a usable model on time. It's, it's it is at our risk, right, that we would not receive certificate of occupancy, so we're obviously interested in completing phase two in advance. Um, but uh we just think it makes sense and it lets us bring a model home to market sooner and in the, the event that we do have interest in those other three lots, um we could uh get started on building those in the meantime and not delay.
Here's Jen.
Okay, so do you have to have a certificate of occupancy to be able to utilize that as a model home, as a showhouse? And or in any way, or can they start showing it without? And or in any way, or can they start showing it without?
To, to be a model home, you have to have certificate of occupancy. You also have to have a conditional use permit and we double check things like.
Bathrooms.
Bathrooms. One of the common pitfalls in model homes is sometimes they'll put like too many lights, too many flags. Too many wavy handmans and it like disturbs the whole neighborhood.
We just want three waving handmans.
Okay, yes, that's a pretty simple process to get a conditional use permit to make sure people can park and not create nuisance.
So can you ensure that this is the model home? Cause I, I think that would answer.
That would answer all of our, I'm pretty sure all of our questions, yeah.
Well, there's four, four lots.
They want to use as a model home, which means you're building that one first before the rest of them anyway, so.
Okay, so I I'm getting a sense that you're okay with this, counsel?
As long as that's a model home, yeah.
Then I'm gonna move us on. Next was item two, which would be recommendation for planning commission. Proposed amendment for affordable housing, um Syracuse City General Plan. This is the adjustments that we have to make uh from what the state's feedback was, so Noah, go ahead and share that.
Uh, yes, so if you remember recently, we went through the just the affordable housing portion. And we sent that to the state and the Division of Workforce Services, who's in charge of enforcing this. Uh, came back with some feedback. And so I worked with them and created this draft and sent it to them and so. Uh, preliminarily, they say, yeah, that looks good. So I said, okay, well, let me see what the council says. Uh, because it is, of course, the general plan, we sent it to planning commission and they've looked at this as well. Uh, they recommended a, a change in one word, um changing the word uh. Into near. Um, and with that, they, they're forwarding a recommendation for approval, a vote of six to one. Uh, it's in the packet. Um, you know, I've got on the screen here, this is the existing plan. And then this is the proposed amendments. And the biggest difference is that they wanted to see a timeline of what, what has happened and what's ongoing. And that is what, the reason why they like this format better is um because we have to do annual reporting to show what is. Been done or in the process. We can, when we do our reports, we can point to each one of these things and say, okay, yeah, this subdivision was completed that we had previously approved or this. Is still ongoing.
So, so barring changes from the state. We're good through twenty-seven? At least, um.
I mean.
I mean, it's, it's a little unpredictable about what changes.
I said barring changes.
Well, I mean, yeah.
I caveat of it.
I, I really like this because it gives me kind of a tangible roadmap of all the things that we are doing to meet these versus before. It's kind of like. We're gonna do these things and, you know, generally it's these areas. I think this really helps. And then I think also, this is probably like you're saying, uh, the state. Is seeing none of this and they're seeing more vague information, which is leading to the legislature pushing for what we, you know, talked about before to.
They had no idea all the stuff that we've been doing, so this really lays it out like, oh. Developments and you have done.
Yeah, what happens when we use more words?
Yeah.
I like it.
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay, good point. Uh, item three is discussion of impact fees for accessory dwelling units. Continued from our last meeting. So, okay, uh, catch us up to speed as to where, where we're at.
Well, we of course discussed it last time. I don't feel like we, I think we spent a lot of time just kind of wrapping our heads around what it is that, that we're looking at, but um. I think if you read here in the text, we're talking about four thousand six hundred forty-four dollars on a detached structure. Um, for ADU.
As an example. Oh, yeah, okay.
They're per unit, so it'll come pretty standard. Whether or not it's a five thousand square foot new house or. Uh. Thousand square foot ADU, you know, good, cause we'll, we're assigning it per unit basis. So the parks and trails, that's twenty-seven fifty. The residential transportation is a thousand twenty. Um, you can see there's other categories, but it's multi-family apartment. Um, greater than four units. So, I mean, if. And that's where some of the questions that you guys were asking Steve earlier comes up of.
Yeah.
What happens if we did our, our uh, I was with IFP, uh, said, IFA says that we gotta charge certain fee and. And we don't. Well, so we'd be kind of waving those and then the public safety fee is eight seventy-four. So those are the three and if, and if you look at the examples of. Highlighted, you know, where they are on the building permit. So this, this section right here is how we calculate the building permit. We have a building permit fee. A plan check fee, park fee, traffic impact, public safety. So those, those numbers correspond to the fee schedule. And then storm waters, uh, just depends on what kind of stormwater. Um, and then, of course, these fees are based off of the building fee. Um, the plan check fee are based off of the valuation, accommodation, this evaluation and specialization.
Proportional to the.
Yeah, so those first two fees are proportional, but the impact fees are by unit. Um, so like this one's a sixty-one thousand dollar project. This was a two hundred ten thousand dollar project, but the fees are, the impact fees assessed are the same. So the question that happy for us is, do we wanna keep applying these to these detached accessory dwelling units? We can currently, uh, we just started doing it this year. So uh, if we want to keep doing it, we can. If you want us to stop, I'm assuming that, that if you don't get in trouble with the IFA to stop doing it.
Well, I guess, I mean, I think we probably would not be in trouble, right? Based on the fact that the state is pushing us to actually eliminate these or.
You can always go lower than what your impact the analysis says. So, uh, I was just sort of thinking of, uh, what is the impact of these on the city? And. You can throw this out, but I was wondering if we could do it. I mean, you can do it based on square footage. Um, but theoretically, you can fit the same number of people in really small places you can in a larger place. What if we just divided up the fee based on the number of rooms being added in the accessory trial dwelling unit? So usually if it's a single bedroom, um, there's probably not. Kids gotta be running around parks and things like that. As soon as you go to two, a three or a four, now you're adding. Entire families that then would have different impacts on.
Makes sense.
That my parents have three bedrooms in, in our basement apartment for them. And so there are two people who don't go to parks and don't.
If you were to sell the house, they, you, all those could be.
That, that, that's the current resonance. So the impact is, what is the potential impact of?
Yeah.
So a single bedroom will never have. I can't say never. Probably won't have a family of ten living in it.
And I'll build a studio.
I would argue that a studio would count as a single bedroom.
But I almost think that like, if you, so the house, let's say it's a five thousand square big old house, you know, and they build a twenty-five hundred square foot home and their impact fee is assessed based on. The, the same rate is applied to every single home, right? I think every home is the same rate.
But I'm trying to find ways to make ADUs a little bit.
No, I know. So I'm saying, so then if you had a twenty-five hundred square foot, it's fifty percent the size of the house, make it fifty percent of the accessory dwelling unit piece.
Yeah.
If it's ten percent the size of the house, make it ten percent of the fees. If it's.
Room is what if you have like. Oh, one bedroom. And you end up splitting it into a two bedroom and put a bathroom in the middle.
We max it out at fifteen hundred.
Sorry.
One at a time.
Well, so what is the, what is the maximum size? And I know before it was like, and even if the house is fifteen hundred, it could be fifteen.
It says the size of the house or fifteen hundred, whichever, whichever is smaller.
So that, so I think the, the square foot thing would make sense then, cause if you bring a fifteen hundred square foot home onto a fifteen hundred square foot of ADU. It'd be the same.
If I could suggest, um, the, the impact fees. They're, they're calculated and they're formulated by state law and they're a little bit different. Than, than the normal building fees, which are by valuation and um that sort of thing. To accomplish your goal that you're trying to accomplish and still make the administration of it easy, I would encourage you to just. Do a flat number that's a percentage of the normal fee.
Okay.
No man, so even if it's like twenty-five percent of the normal fee.
Well, fifteen hundred square foot home is not the normal home. I don't think you can build really a fifteen hundred square foot single family home, right? A townhome, possibly. And so I think the impact fee is based on a much bigger home. I would say on average, like the, uh, you know, the plan.
It's the average home, household size.
Honestly, I think people are building three thousand square foot. So I would say fifty percent would make sense.
Well, if you look at the transportation fee, that same logic is kind of being applied, um, thinking about. You know, the smaller the unit, the less fee, if you look on here, five thirty for.
So we had a suggestion from Seth that, uh, eighty, eighty US get a flat fifty percent in that degree. And I heard a couple of not had, or agreement, so is that agreeable? Because if so, then we have kind of a consensus.
I think that's a place for sure to start. I think fifty percent is much more reasonable than the full, full percentage. But I would even be willing to go to forty percent.
But what if the ADU is the same size as the house? What if I built?
Max already.
And so the house already paid more than they should have. Some of the people.
And you can't take a home now that's on, on a six pack lot and build a home. Yeah, you can't add an ADU to that. You'd have homes that have more lot and you'd have larger homes already that are adding ADs. I think the vast majority. Probably ninety-something percent of ADs will be built on a lot that's a big enough lot. That already has a substantial home on it. So I, I think fifteen hundred. Is a, is a very reasonable amount of room and I think that's reasonable to have it be at least fifty percent or less.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I mean, can you? Yeah, I mean, you can do anything, right? But. To accom, you can accomplish, I think, what you're trying to accomplish. And I mean, you saw the list. There's already like twenty fees that someone has to calculate on. Um, you know, we can make it very simple and still, I think, accomplish the goal you're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, we don't have to do trigon, trigonometry to calculate.
I think you take the bedroom count, take the size of the house.
Do we have a general consensus that it will move to fifty percent for?
My only concern is that um I could have a. Fifteen hundred square foot home. And I could put a barn in the back and, and, and above the barn, close in a bedroom that is. Three thousand square feet and it's bigger than my house. And technically you could do that. And they would pay.
Studio apartment in a barn.
Half of what. It was huge. You're just saying if somebody did that. You're saying uh, maybe you was max of fifteen?
Yeah.
So anything over uh fifteen hundred square feet is, is no longer qualifies as an ADU. Then I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna say we have general consensus.
As long as we have that.
Which we can always change before we vote, but we have general consensus on that, so we'll move that to voting meeting. I'm gonna move this on to discussion.
Well, I just get a clarification before we move on, sorry.
But I do wanna, we need to point that out, we're that ADU.
We're, we're amending the impact fee schedule to add that in. This is not a.
Just the fee schedule.
And would it just say for ADUs or would it say?
I just say, yeah, I'll teach those impact fees to have an ADU.
Transportation ADU.
Just, could you, could I just get it repeated?
So fifty percent, fifty percent be for an ADU as a regular dwelling and that would be a suggestion.
With the limitation made being less than fifteen hundred.
Well, that's already in the code. All right, so I'm gonna move to F, which is discussion regarding city sponsored business launch service. The suggestion here is that people come to the city to get their business license. And to help them get started in the city, there are several things that we could do. And so I'm suggesting that we offer the opportunity for, to help them with any of these things that they like. Um, so go ahead, Noah, talk about this. It's done in other cities and. We're trying to promote business success uh upon launch.
Yeah, we definitely wanna make sure that businesses feel welcome here when they go out on a limb and open up a business. It's, it's a lot of risk and things like that. Uh, currently, we don't really do much, um. Right now, if they wanna have an open house or something, they work with the local chamber and they get a ribbon cutting and. You know, there's, I've, I've been to a few in their variety of. You know, complexity of how much they do. We poked around and asked other cities what they do. Um. You know, one idea I thought was good is that they provide a framed business license. The best, what? I would cautious us against, and I don't think we'd go there, but we don't really have the manpower to necessarily be like party planning people and. Punch cookies.
I think if they wanna do an open house, that's on them and whatever they provide, that's on them. The suggestion, and this is just not eliminate the chamber. This is, this is just a suggestion that because they come to us first. That we would say these are things available and we would help coordinate. So if they wanted a write-up in our magazine, we could do that without a, uh, included fee where they would have to pay advertising beyond the. Initial time. If they wanted us to put out a Facebook post. Once we have this communications person in line, that would be a good thing for us to be able to do is, hey, we have a new business. Let's let you know. Um, so these are a couple of things that just. You know, the idea is they can check and say, I want some of them, not all of them.
So can we literally just give them like a menu with like checks, options and be like, which of these would you like from us? And they can be like.
They could say I'll pass on all.
And, and I would, let's, I would like to formally add an introduction to the chamber, at least give the. Right you.
Yeah.
Get you in contact with our local chamber, just because I do wanna make sure they're included.
I think you would even do the, I, I like the, the large scissors ribbon thing, but I think if somebody's already bought it and they're providing it, maybe it's, that's the introduction is. Here's the chamber, they provide this ribbon cutting service, we can.
But we also have giant scissors.
We already, we already have them too.
They're gold too, aren't they? They're like. The red. We've already got it all.
Anyway, the point being that, you know.
We should just do a frame of business license, like not ask them if they'd like one. It's like, that's something we should probably do for them.
They could say I don't want that or that they wanna do their own because they have a special whatever. Cause they may not like our.
Sorry. Here's a catalog of gifts. Pick one, couple.
So, what's your general feeling of, is this okay? Why we wouldn't just say here, we're here, here to help.
Yeah. I think this, yeah, do that, show up.
Okay, so I'm gonna move us on because I think that's all good. So, uh, item G. Uh, discuss council and mayor liaison committee assignments. Rhodey, could you pull that up? Let's talk about it.
Yeah. I gotta get on Zoom. I wasn't on Zoom yet.
So there are a couple of minor changes, just, but we still wanna spread this out amongst everybody and I think. That what we did last year really worked. I, I was pretty pleased that everybody kind of pitched in, so. We can make adjustments any given year, but um. So we'll talk through that.
I wanna keep all mine.
Okay.
Hey, would you be interested in trading the emergency preparedness for parts?
Sure.
Bet. We'd like to trade, please, sir. But we're not there yet. They miss you. They talk about you all the time and it's like, come on, guys. Like, they literally talk about him all the time. Like, okay, you don't want me here, I get it. You do, I'm like, okay.
Well, I'm flattered. Uh, I, I would be happy to, to go back.
Heck, I'm flattered for you. They're like their superhero.
They're good, they're a good bunch of people. Um, while we're talking, I, would you be interested? I would.
Are you guys proposing trades just like?
I don't know, maybe.
Trades, um, I will say that in the group. Uh.
A.
No. Group A, if everybody's cool with the same assignments, we can just continue.
I was gonna ask, would you be willing to let me take over Syracuse High? Only because my daughter goes there and I, I'd love to just. Only because my daughter goes there and I, I'd love to just.
What are we trading for?
I don't know. Do you want Syracuse Junior High? It's closer to your house.
But my kids go to Syracuse High next year. I met the principal of the high school, he was a great guy.
I, I, I do have an issue. I can never attend their community councils, I'm gone. So if you're okay with me keeping them, that's, and I just told the principals. I'm your liaison if you need to contact the city for anything, but I can never attend them.
Yeah, I think. One of the challenges was that because of that very issue, we had. One person doing like six, and then they couldn't go because they were at the same time. So I'm comfortable if you guys are saying I'm your liaison and I'm willing to, maybe you can. Come into the office and say, what do you need from me? What do you need me to take back to them? This does not mean you have to attend, but.
I just take cookies.
So you're, you're liaison to the school, not necessarily, oh, it is the community council.
In the office, talk to everyone, if you need anything for me.
Yeah, so I'm, I mean, I'd love to keep those two schools, I just, um. I'm not there, but they know.
You know that you love them.
That I, that I am available.
Okay. Any other changes in group A? Do I need to be writing this down, I guess? Oh, you got it, okay. Group B. Uh, okay, does anybody have any changes to group B? I have one change that I'd like to ask, and that is, um. I'd like to formally say that. We approve in the absence of voting members to the ULCT committee. That we would allow for Brody or Bree. To be a voting member in the absence of voting members or alternates.
I'm good with that.
We're, we're all good with that, okay.
Not Bree, but just.
You're gonna get the lawyer mad at you?
Can't fault you for being honest.
Anyway, that's, I, you know, just there are times when they're down there because of the session, but that would help, so. Alright, if that's okay, let's move on to group C. In group C, we did not have written down, so I added. The, um. Uh, I added the West Davis Chamber, and that was an assignment for Lisa. Um, so I added that to the list.
So Jordan and I are gonna switch parks and emergency preparedness.
Now, I want you to understand that with that said. We have not met with parks, and I don't see that changing because so many of our parks. Decisions have already been made by the budget.
That's fine, why are you gonna interrupt this situation?
I'm not, I just don't want you to say, now I have to make sure that we get them a lot of assignments.
No, no, it's fine.
Okay. Alright, I'm good with that, if you're good with that, because it isn't ad nee- as needed, I'm not gonna. Force them to meet for no reason. Okay, the other one would be. That, um.
I, I thought we had a, uh, Davis Chamber.
Yes, we do, it's up there, the third one down.
Oh, there it is.
And Paul was assigned to that, he didn't make it to any of those. I'm willing to, because we have twelve on the list, and I would be happy to have you all have two and just two. I'm happy to take that one as my second, only because this, uh, last week. I was named by the cog. As, uh, their representative to the order director, so I'm gonna have to go to that now, so, um. I, I'm welcome if some, one of you also wants to go, but I will be there.
This would be feeding.
But now I can go to the youth court and hang out with them, so you're going back to the other one.
So, uh, it's just a thought, I mean. I don't know what that. That leaves one open though, who, who had?
I did, but, but yeah, but the emergency preparedness kept me from going to the youth court, so now that he's saying that, I'll be able to free up that time. Be able to go to the court, and he said they only need as needed, so that's perfect for me, you know, he tried to hijack that.
Okay, you, I see, architectural review board.
I only have.
Hughes and Wes Davis.
But that's fine, because the architectural review board was seldom, and, and the.
Could we give that to Paul?
Yeah.
Okay. Since now, there's. The other one I would bring up, Paul is not here, he's on a cruise. But, um, the.
Rubbing it in doesn't.
Liaison to the planning commission is huge job. We wanna rotate that or leave that?
I mean, I just want to get feedback from it, whatever we do, we haven't really gotten too much, so.
He's doing a great job there, though.
We wouldn't know that, though. I don't, I mean, I'd like to, I, I would like some reports, just because that's so pertinent to what we end up discussing here.
Oh, we haven't gotten those at a few meetings, have we? Paul's report.
I think we got one once.
Oh, I've gotten like a bunch of them. I usually got one every week, but I think it's been this last few times I haven't gotten one.
No, you're not here, you, okay, so. Alright, in previous years, the liaison from the council. Sends an email.
Get one from him, you're just, you're, I think you're just getting an, a notice that they're having him.
From Paul, it's just the last couple, I haven't gotten one, but I usually always getting.
I've never gotten one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so anyway. Uh, so where are we at with that?
I mean, if, if, if he's doing reports and we can figure out how to.
Get them?
To get the. Resolve that disconnect, then. I'm okay with him continuing on that.
That'd be great, I just, yeah.
Okay. So, the changes we're making then is we're gonna remove Paul from the Davis Chamber, put him on architectural review board. Lisa's gonna give that one up, so she only has two. I'll take Davis Chamber because I'm now on their board of directors. Um, and we're switching plant, uh, parks and. Uh, disaster preparedness with Jordan and Jen.
Yes, please.
Get it all covered? Okay. Alright, item D. Now, in item D. Um, I don't know that there's, yes. Oh, you dibs, oh, shoot, okay, so, um. I don't know that. The, um. Easter thing. Turns out to be much that we can do there, it seems to be. Handled with.
It is pretty handled, but, um. Uh, Seth came last year and called like throwing and stuff, so anybody who wants to do.
And you're all good for that, so.
Planning and stuff, no, it's pretty much already going.
So here's my thought. I would say that we leave the pumpkin walk as an individual thing. Night Out and Fire Open House, and which is now Public Works, has been combined. I would say maybe we put two council members on heritage days and night out. And we take off Easter, cause Easter seems to be in the planning stages. Pretty much handled by parks.
Yeah, so I, I'll stay on heritage if that's okay, and then, because we ended up doing that run, and that was really great.
Yeah.
And I want to do that again.
Can I take Paul from the Easter and put him on our, um, public services? Because he's very easygoing when I'm like, Paul just said, he's like, alright.
Okay.
Do they tell me what to do, it's I.
Well, Seth's, so Seth's on night out too.
So Seth can be heritage.
You'll be on heritage days, and that's okay?
Sure, already got it, sure.
Okay.
Got fire shirts.
Alright, so that's, if that's okay, I still like having your input in the planning, and I think that that was good. I just think that Easter kinda was already done by the time we got this up and running, so. Alright.
Uh, could we, could we back up? Uh, what was the decision on B again?
B was everybody's gonna keep their assignments with the added. That, uh, we formalized that you guys can step in when. Um. I- i- if there's not a voting member there, because we didn't formally authorize that, I don't know that anybody's gonna stop and check credentials, but. We don't want you guys if you're there.
And then that's me, Bree, and who?
I could be doing it if I'm there.
The signature.
But I'd be last.
So still stay on there.
Yeah, they're all voting if you're there, and if you're not there, these two could step in for one of them. Okay, I'm good with that. So, do we get that handled, everybody's? Alright, and thank you, cause everybody did a lot last year that I was pretty pleased, so.
Hey, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so this job has no perks, can we at least get like designated parking at the event, so we don't have to like. Like, there's literally five of us, can we just get like a spot where you can be like, park over there? That's a serious, one hundred percent serious question.
I didn't think Presta has parking.
She, she parks up on the grass.
Yeah, I know, you gotta ask her, ask her, she's like, you guys can park over there, but don't tell anybody, I'm like, I'm not gonna tell them either, they'll have to ask for themselves. I mean it like all the things.
Um, so the question's on the table, does anybody feel like that's needed?
No, fine, just me, alright, I have a full drive, I can park on a curb.
I, I walk half the time.
Alright, she's parking on curbs, but just letting you know.
Identifiable, ain't it?
If you don't, you have to confess to something every week.
You're running good, last meeting we talked about what, code enforcement?
How many violations have we admitted to?
I'm, I'm gonna move us on to item H, which is. Fire Station Thirty-two, and Aaron.
Mayor, before, so I, I just wanted to bring up just as a, uh, placeholder, so we talked about a few weeks back on mental health awareness month.
Yeah.
And I believe onto the CTC, I know, we don't have announcements, I just wanna. Put this in there real quick, I reached out to CTC and they gave us some options for hosting specific classes here in Syracuse.
Okay.
And so I will need to kinda get back with them about what and when and now, you know, where we hosted, if it's a community center or wherever, so.
Yeah, I think the part of that, the question was which one did they want us to host, cause they did say that they would be. Like ten to twenty people, and that could be a difference.
Yeah, so they, they proposed additional options, um. Based on just like a whole slew of events for, so I'll, I don't know if you want me to send that out to you guys, or. Or what, as far as like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we add this whole conversation on our, I thought it was gonna be on this work session, but it's not, I think that's a deep dive, but the whole mental health. Putting it in conversation, but did we talk about that last time?
Yeah, she talked about.
Yeah.
Recognizing like.
Like May is like.
You know, what do we do, what is it called, that we?
Right.
To do an official declaration or.
Yeah.
Recognizes.
And then we had, uh.
The blessing box.
Box that we talked about, that was supposed to. Yeah, that, all of it, and then you brought up something too, didn't you?
Say the blessing.
I, I brought it up in my, my comments.
Yeah.
Centers.
Yeah, we were, it's just a whole conversation we were supposed to have during work session about what we're gonna do mental health wise, blessing box, all of it. Big time than the staff.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm writing it down.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I had it written down last time, but, okay. So we have the mental health recognition month. Part of that being the blessing box. What else?
And then just what we're gonna, I, I guess just what we're hosting or what we're willing to do for the.
Okay.
Just the events.
I was waiting for them to get back to, I said that we were willing to do one, I was waiting for them to get back with what they wanted us to do, so.
So and that's the one that said, that was supposed to happen in January, and I don't think they got back to us.
They didn't.
Yeah, okay.
I do, but I thought it was anytime during this year, they said they wanted three and they asked for three cities.
That's right, yeah, so.
So I said we'd be one of the cities, but we didn't, they said we'd get back to us.
I'm meeting with them on the thirty first, so.
Okay. Alright. Got it. Okay, Fire Station Thirty-two.
Ready to go?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sure, no problem, okay. It is not, that's, that's, that's an old picture. We'll get it in there, it works out great, you'll see it on most all of the PowerPoint slides, sometimes with fire behind it, sometimes all. Whatever, we'll figure it out. So, this discussion today is just the timeline discussion, where we're at in the process now, kind of what things are looking like over the next little bit. And to preface this, some of this is still kind of. On a little sliding scale based upon the ER. So, I put this in the packet, this is the timeline that's in the packet. On, on the chart, and I really just wanted to kinda, to go from there, starting at the top with the RFP design, and that's where we're. We're currently at right now, the, the RFP's been out. Uh, for bid, it closes on Thursday. And we'll move through that.
So, let me just take care of that housekeeping item right now, so the bid will close this week. We will have a formalized review process. Um, we've used everybody on council for at least one review this year. Is there anybody who would like to be on the review committee for this? I can only take two. Okay, Seth, Jen? Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll include you on the review, you'll get a document of what those proposals were, and. And we will bring it to council for everybody's review, but we'll have a recommendation.
Yeah, tentatively, what the plan is, is that those, uh, those bids, it closes on Thursday at five, and so. Uh, Brody's gonna set up a Teams channel. And those documents will be placed in the Teams channel for the committee, along with the grading sheet with the deadline for you to go over it. Grade it, and then we'll find a time to meet and go over that as a group, so. Uh, and then, of course, you know, throughout the rest of that process, we, you know, move on and, and start station construction at whatever point. The next one underneath that is the land acquisition, which we've kind of discussed that already, and that's still working through the process. Um. The ones underneath that was the ambulances and the engine, which we discussed in our last council meeting.
So is this correct that it, we may not get those until after? Everything's constructed.
That's why we ordered it last. Yeah, that's why we ordered.
Yeah, I, I didn't realize that, when you put it in a line like this, it's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When there are years underneath, it's not just months, yeah, that's a situation.
So that's, that's why, uh, that's why we came to the council in the last meeting.
And in the off chance that if somebody backs out, we would be able to step in potentially and.
And take.
Somebody else's.
Yes, yeah, there, there is.
With the demand for this, is there any likelihood that that happens?
There, there is actually, especially with the ambulances, which is probably the most important component at, you know, at this point, because that's where the biggest impact is gonna be at the ER. Um, so, yeah, actually, the, this, all the ambulances and the engine should all be ordered and finished up, hopefully by the end of this month. Um.
So this is not a transport engine, though, right?
Yep.
But on the engine, there's no way, I mean, with a thirty to forty month, uh, interval, there's no way to even get it.
Yeah, in fact.
Is done.
Yeah, yeah, uh, it's probably not likely, and in fact, the, the proposal, which I received today, and I'm sending it through the contract routing. Uh, it's a thirty-five to thirty-six month is what they're telling us. So we, we actually cut four months off of it, so.
So we would get it.
Yeah, and they're saying, they're saying that if. They're also saying that if things change throughout, they're, they're building another facility, they're hiring more people, if things change, then of course that'll shorten, but. But that's their guaranteed time, so.
What is the temp housing?
Okay, so temporary housing, uh, is gonna go along with the staffing, let me pull.
Leave like some RP in the back of the.
Yeah, so the temporary housing. Well, like I said, this goes with the ER, um, the last time I talked to the ER, they were wanting to break ground this spring. With, and they were saying, uh, they're, they've got these ERs down to about a nine month build time. And so their, their goal was to open this fall or the springtime of next year, so we've got. A little bit of time to work with, we're not gonna be able to build a station that quick to house additional people. So we'll have to ha- we'll have to hire additional people to handle the, the call load that comes with that. Um.
So we're just gonna use our backup ambulance to run those?
Uh, yeah, unless we can get one sooner. Okay, absolutely, and I think, I, I think if we're looking at. Maybe a year out before that ER is done and open, and we realize an impact. I feel pretty confident we might be able to get at least one of the ambulances within that time that we've ordered, so.
Which would push it to active and one backup for both, which is better than.
Yeah.
Than two active.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I am putting the cart before the horse. For temporary housing. That can we? See what the cost is to purchase those, and then after it gets built, turn them over to public works, so they can use them as offices in the back space that they need. Is that something we can look into? Okay.
Yeah, so originally we were thinking of something like that, like a construction housing put in the back. That, uh, we could turn into some bedrooms back there and, and, but, uh, we're looking at fifteen hundred dollars a month in rent. You're looking at needing to get utilities to it, and station alerting to it, it's just a, a, a quite a bit of cop. We do have an upstairs training room in the fire station, it's got a high ceiling area, um, that we looked at, we do have some. We do have some, uh. We do have some uh. We we do have some construction folks on the department. Uh, asked them to kind of look at it, they've estimated about eight to ten thousand dollars to build three semi-private rooms up there. They would be full walls, but there would not be a ceiling on there, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't uh. If we put a a ceiling on there, we'd have to retrofit sprinkler systems and and all sorts of stuff, so there's there's a lot of work that'll have to go into that. So we're trying to do this uh with the the least amount of burden on on.
This would supplant that area?
So this would be, yeah, it's a it's a training area that we use uh right now, but it would be temporarily used for these. Yes, and it would be inside of the, it would be inside of the station, which is nice. Uh, because we wouldn't have to worry about any of the utilities running them out. We already have the station alerting system which we are, that you have approved, and they are in the process of finishing the install on. And we had them add something to that room, so it's already set.
Instead of a height to the shower.
Yeah. So.
This is crazy, this sounds so crazy. If you saw that, if it's been that in the public works, we are ghetto, like we, our buildings are becoming like. Yeah, I get the need for it, but wow, this is.
One of the things that's that's nice about this, if we retrofit the upstairs training room. Uh, and and started working on that, you know, hopefully within this next uh this next budget here. Or possibly even sooner, we can build these walls to be pinable. So in that training room, this is what I really like about it, is after the fact, we can move the walls around and create when firefighters going in and practicing search. And all that, we can move it up. So, so we can, we can uh use that. Originally, we were just thinking of something like that.
The police would like to come and use it as well.
They're they're welcome, they're welcome. They're welcome to use it, just, you know.
Just stay out of.
Don't kick it in the door.
So anyway, uh, that's. Temporary housing, so.
Okay.
And uh. From temporary housing, we move on to staffing, of course.
So fast.
Staffing a station is gonna take uh and and. Let's talk about staffing really quick, because right now we staff with full time and part time. We all know the challenges of part-time staffing and trying to move forward. Uh, and grow our department to a completely full-time department and move away from all the pitfalls with uh with the part-time staffing.
We're still not fully staffed part-time.
No. No, we're not, we still have open positions at our part-time, we haven't been able to fill, but we. No, everybody's starting to move away from that, so uh, so we're looking at twenty-one to staff a new station. And that's a, that's a big uh.
I think she's just like.
What I'm hoping is that we can just do this in smaller chunks. Uh, and I can utilize and and hopefully apply for another safer grant. And 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 get that, so the first part is the staffing for nine and and.
So, Aaron, on the, on the safer ground, obviously, we've gone down that path before, was it? Are our odds any better because we're doing a whole new station, which I think is what you said, that it was kind of more general report versus just the ambulance switch over?
Yeah, one of the the, one of the issues we ran into prior was the the. The assistance to firefighter grant is for firefighters. And where are, we were using for paramedics and firefighters do dual role, but we run more EMS. So we weren't ranked high enough, we were still ranked, we made it through the entire process.
This is what the grant is designed.
This is what the grant is designed. I feel, I feel confident with it, plus I've I've done a lot more uh research on it and I've uh. I've reached out through our uh. Through Lexipol, our policy software company, they also have a grants division, I've worked with a little bit and taken some webinars. So I I, I don't know, I'd hate to say, yeah, we're gonna get that and I feel confident, cause you never know, right? I I felt good about it too, so put a lot.
First born child, you know, for grants, it's crazy.
Yeah, it's crazy, so.
We have to be like, what do you call them when it's a new station, a battalion?
That's, let me talk about that really quick, so.
That was my question too, I thought like.
Staffing for nine, so what we're looking on the timeline is staffing for nine, it's just of course needed to meet the demands. The staff, once they're staffed, we'll put them in the temporary housing and then they'll be used to help start the staffing of Station thirty-two. So we're looking for, in this budget, we're working with Steve, this upcoming budget, at least six firefighters to staff the ambulance twenty-four seven. And the hiring process will only begin once we have confirmed dates of the ER opening, so that's on kind of a sliding scale. Um, and but we gotta have enough time that we can train them. Uh, because right now. Uh, great, I just talked to Draper Fire, they're, they're finishing a station and they're hiring eighteen. Uh, they already have battalion chiefs, so they don't need to hire those extra three. Hazel's getting ready to start a station this next year, uh, everybody's like. Yeah, everybody's moving, everybody's growing, and so we're gonna be fighting for staffing. And we're gonna have to train them in-house, so that moves me down to the next piece, which is the battalion chiefs. As we, as we grow, we need the battalion chiefs anyway as that, as that. Uh, management level to to oversee the two stations. We'll only hire that then once we have confirmed dates for the ER as well. With staffing no sooner than two thousand four, so almost like we did with the paramedics, where we did a half year. Help, help out with the budget a little bit.
So with battalion chiefs, where where do they fall in the rank structure? So you've got. Captain, engineers, captains, are they?
They're above a captain.
Above a captain, but below the the.
But where do they do with, where do they fall with job? Because. Uh, at a fire, they still go to fires or?
Yeah, yeah, so, great question.
He goes to fires.
No, I I get up in the middle of the night, I do, I do, and that's one of the things I wanted to, I wanted to discuss. Discuss that with you, but can you guess, so battalion chiefs, I know I thought this through, built this. Battalion chiefs oversee the operations at both stations, they, they are one per shift. So they're twenty-four seven coverage with the a battalion chief. They handle all the scheduling and staffing, all the shift training, and they're the incident commander, so if you remember all your NIMs training. They're the ones that are in the vehicle that oversee the incident, bring in additional resources, that's typically what either Joe and I do right now, but. As our call volume has increased, that is getting more and more frequent uh up in the middle of the night. Uh, early this morning on, you know, the be on a. Vehicle accident that that we thought was gonna be a little bit worse than it needed to be, but the battalion chiefs will run on quite a few calls. And they're there for the potential of the incident to grow. But what that does is that allows uh Joe and I to be able to utilize our time better. Uh, today. Joe was, went on a gas leak that we had in the city, which took him out of the office. And disrupted the workday, right? And sometimes these incidents can go. The the gas leak we had uh at the roundabout of Gentile and Bluff was. All night long, and so sometimes him and I are on, can be on these calls for six, seven, eight hours. And it takes us out of the office doing the jobs that we need to do, so that's what the battalion chiefs are in. I wouldn't have asked for this calls and calls ago, but where we're to the point, uh, we, just a. Rough estimate of numbers, we've had about a thirteen percent increase just from last year. Um.
They have emergency room open.
What's that? And we have an emergency room open, which is gonna add.
West Davis corridor.
Right, so all of those things are necessitate the need for the growth, but more importantly, we need them early in the staffing because we're gonna have to use them. So typically, we buy, we buy, we we get firefighters that are already trained, we we do buy them, I guess, essentially. But we bring them in, and now we're gonna have to bring them in and train them from from scratch, which is kind of. A a different challenge, so. That's why the need for battalion chiefs are, so going back to the staffing question, this is what I would look to start the chunk. Really.
What is the market for battalion chiefs look like? Is that even?
It's all over the area.
Yes, battalion chiefs won't be difficult to fill, it's if we promote from within, it's backfilling those positions through, right? So, so i- if there's promotion from within, we have uh. You know, we have a career development plan, and so there are people who are preparing themselves for this. For battalion chiefs?
No.
You know what, I would have to look, look it up, and I think that there's a a minimum of an associate's degrees required and. There's different certifications, a level of certification that's required, but, and they have to have uh. Yeah, supervisor experience, eight to ten years, I think, in the fire service, so. So there's uh quite a bit, when we've not ever had battalion chiefs. Fortunately, I ran as a battalion chief in Leyton City before coming down here, so I've got the ability to kind of mentor and help the battalion chiefs grow in that position. Uh, plus I'm willing to bet that we would probably, depending upon who's available within our current staffing, we might have to to pull one or two from outside. So, with some experience, but anyway, any other questions on that staffing? Cause this. This first nine is something that we're looking at trying to move earlier than later.
I do appreciate the fact that it gives more opportunities for firefighters.
Me too.
Guys, that's, it's, it's good for morale to be able to move, move up within the organization, but. Uh, the career development plan has been in place for four or five years, and people choose whether they want to sort of promote, so. Uh, okay, the next one is ordering station equipment, the thing with station equipment is it's really kind of. To be determined right now.
Just harbor freight, right?
Uh, SEVAs are harbor freight.
Some gloves.
So there are, there are things that we can uh. A a lot of this has to do with architectural, the design, the building of the station, what can be worked in with the build, what cannot be worked in with the build. Uh, we have a current AFG grant, it's an equipment grant. Right now, let's open it, closes on February tenth, we're applying for that grant right now. Uh, for, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant, it's a ninety-ten match, we're applying for that now, and we're gonna try for some extrication equipment. To help offset those costs for some of that equipment that that will need.
Okay, chief, I gotta call you out here, but of all the really cool fire equipment, is that a pop machine?
Of sorts.
Yeah, yeah, we, well, you gotta have it in the station though, what it is, it's a vending machine for our controlled substances, for our medications. Our narcotics and stuff like that, so it's it's, it's an expensive.
There's so many cool things.
I should have put it on a bigger picture so you could see.
I think it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually use that uh and our, we, it uses our key cards that we use for the city. And it takes two firefighters to access the medication and they have to type to a report, so it's a controlled substance DEA required, so like that, so. Keep rehab.
All those, all those city key cards work on that or?
Nope.
Not even at the front door.
I don't even let mine work there, cause I don't need to access it.
That's, that's. Have you worried a little bit?
What's the worst that's gonna happen? They're gonna come back from a column, I'll be making lunch.
Okay, uh, so that's the station equipment, that's kind of still up in the air, and we'll we'll work that as it, as it comes out. Uh, the next one is the projected ER completion. Just really, we don't know what's going on. I have reached out to all of the agencies that I know of that have got these uh standalone ERs from the same. Company or the ERs, Northview Fire District has Pleasant View ER, their twenty twenty-one call volume was six hundred and thirty-two calls. They run BLS and ALS, and they brought in a revenue of about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's a contracted rate, so if it's interfacility, it's a guaranteed payment, not like we do with our our billing now. Where we send it out to billing and and we collect forty percent, fifty percent of that, so. After write-offs. Draper Fire Department has the Lone Peak Hospital, which is what. Uh, according to the plans from HCA is what our ultimate, their ultimate five-year plan for our facility will look like. Um, they run just ALS calls uh out of there. Uh, they have, they run seven hundred and thirty calls a year, and they had a revenue of six hundred and thirty thousand, they don't do contracted rates. They just bill every, every patient, that's right, fee per service.
Seven hundred and thirty is just ALS calls?
Yeah. Uh. So you can see that it's the same revenue as Northview did. Uh, so of course, we're gonna work towards the contracted rates, cause I think the revenue is a little, quite a bit better.
So who does the BLS calls?
Gold Cross. Uh, if you remember, or maybe you don't, Draper Fire Department used to be run by Unified Fire Authority, who did not run ambulances. And so Gold Cross Ambulance, who ran the inner facilities for that area, uh. They ran everything, and then when Draper broke away from Unified Fire Authority and built their station. They came in and they worked out in agreement with with Gold Cross to maintain the BLS and they took the ALS calls.
So my concern is, you you said that ours will be similar to Draper. And you're saying you're gonna do BLS and ALS, you need to double that number. So that's fourteen hundred calls.
Well, roughly, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
They're a bigger population.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, and I I think the other thing too is, is where's their next closest hospital from Draper, right? So. So for us, we're gonna be just right up the street from Davis Hospital. I think people are gonna, yeah, I think people will look at it, I think the demographic's a little bit different.
Okay.
I don't think we're gonna have nearly that many calls. Uh.
That that could bring me some peace.
But who knows? Who knows? What I'm estimating based off of talking to all of these chiefs and seeing what's going on, I'm estimating six hundred, eight hundred calls a year for BLS and ALS.
Now, for now.
For, for starting, uh, I talked to Lehigh Fire Department, they have the Westlake ER that just opened in October. And they've, in the last four months, they've had a hundred and ten calls, and that's gradually. Um, growing, he anticipated to be at about two to two and a half calls per day out of that ER within a year, so. So, but you figure each one of those calls, uh, each call is about a two-hour investment of time. So.
Okay.
So you're looking at two calls, you're well, four to five hours into it. Uh, so that's what I'm estimating for ours with contracted rates between six hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred thousand in revenue. Um. Let's see, we talked about the grants really quick. So just as a reminder, the equipment grants a ten percent on our, on our end. Um, if if it awards and we we get that award, it'll be awarded by September thirtieth of. This upcoming year, so I'll include that into our upcoming budget. Uh, with a period of performance for twenty-four months, so we don't have to buy the equipment right away once we get it either, so, which I wouldn't see why we wouldn't, but. Uh, the AFG Safer Grant, which is the staffing grant, it covers one hundred percent of wages and benefits for three years.
Nice.
So, um. The submission deadline, they haven't set the date yet, but I'm guessing it'll be early twenty twenty-four, about the February, March time. Of twenty-four with an award by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and we have a hundred and eighty days from the award date to hire.
Those are awful turnaround times on those grant awards.
Oh, they're.
That is just ridiculous.
Yeah, the the grant opens up, and if you've ever filled out a a FEMA grant or a federal grant. It opened up on just like January tenth or something, and they're like February tenth. A lot of time, yeah, and then we'll tell you a lot later on, so. Uh, and then the last thing. Of course, this is on a sliding scale as well, this will be the. The final staffing, and this is what we've put in for the Safer Grant for these twelve, which would give us. You know, if we get this grant, the three years to be able to move forward, what we need out of that though. Is I need the support from the city council, because part of that FEMA grant is the support from the council saying that you will support. The hiring of these firefighters and their continued, their continued salaries and benefits once the period of performance is over.
Is that something we need to do by resolution in the next meeting?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, that is nothing that needs to be done by resolution, it can be just something that. That I received the okay for, and I can put that into the grant, saying that the city council.
Oh, I I saw head nods, you're good, so.
So I I think we're. I think we're good, so.
We're gonna keep them around.
I mean, I, I think it would be very helpful if it was in a public meeting and everybody said yes, that would be. That would support me. Yeah, so. Uh, anyway, to to finish the staffing would really be just to staff that engine. And uh. Once again, hiring process will only begin once we have confirmed dates on the opening of the station. And allowing for enough time for the hiring process and training, so. That's kind of where we're at on this timeline. I know it's kind of bam in your face, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, but.
And then the vehicles delivered a few years.
We got everything covered except the cars.
The original plan, actually, the original timeframe for the new station would have actually coincided with. The delivery of that engine and everything, it was gonna be two thousand. Two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, something like that. Um but. We have the the new ER come online, which kind of.
Then we went ahead and proved me ER.
So they automatically put us behind the ball.
I was surprised when the ER told me how fast they were gonna have that thing.
Did you see how fast one in Kaysville went up? That thing was.
So I.
We're happy if you want it.
Yeah.
It's better for the city and citizens.
Strategizing.
Yeah. I mean, we were gonna build one anyway, it's just thinner than than when it was gonna be.
The fire station.
Fire station.
With the battalion chief.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you.
Yes.
I'm gonna move us on because you know, it is Public Works uh biennial review. That's Robert, so we gotta give him some time.
And we get a. We get to use the bathroom break, right?
All right. All right, so I'm gonna call for a five five minute recess.
I am one year.
We're right on target with revenue and expense. It's looking good. Secondary is one that's kind of suffering now. I should also say that this is just a snapshot in time from our budget that was approved July. So obviously it kind of changes as we go along, but I I took that. Just as a snapshot because it's already published. It's already out there. So back on secondary water, the the. Thing that's happening there is the big capital project, which is our reservoir at our meters. Meters are requirement, so that's why.
Question that I have is that going to be out of work for a couple of years because those are multi-year projects?
Uh, yes, it will. It will.
Do we count the grant as revenue?
We do.
Well, because that was after this. Budget, right?
Okay.
So it'd be really curious to see how.
That actually helps it out with the grant and then the the bond is covering.
Oh, you're correct.
Um, the Class C storm, the streetlights, they're pretty much right on target. So they're looking very good. Or is covering expenses? So overall secondary is is probably the ones we're just. Now, this slide shows that the utility bill in comparison to our benchmark cities. So the different colors for each city represent just the different years. And since we do deep dives every two years. It's it's showing the two-year timeframe some plantings, um, twenty twenties and twenty twenties. Um, we're third from lowest. For our current rate, you know, everyone's rates going up uh every year, even if it's just slightly so. Uh, we're still on the lower end as far as still remaining affordable in comparison to our benchmark cities. Looking good there. Vision and statement number two is we are customer service oriented. So uh, one method of measuring our customer service is by our number of fix-it tickets that come in. This comes in online um or by phone calls. They get input as a fix-it and that's the green line there. And you can see over the ten-year history from twenty twelve, twenty twenty-two. We doubled the number of fixes that uh we've received. And responded to. And the blue stakes is the blue line. Now that's the stark difference. Um, just in the last two years worth of time, the number of blue stakes tickets have doubled just in. Two years and that is has been taking a massive toll on um. On staffing and and handling it, partly on the admin staff and and obviously on the blue staker. So. We have one primary per uh employee who does blue staking, uh but then we have some backups to a couple of others that just do backups. Then we also rely on the our streets crew, uh probably uh one person there to do the street wire marking.
Is that trailing off at all with a slowdown?
So what we're noticing is much of our um requests are coming from Utopia's installation. And you you dots project. So now whether it slows down or not.
Utopia is coming to an end. They're pretty much almost done.
Yes, but what could happen, you know, from here on out, you know, whatever is based on growth, right? So.
Something else is right around.
So every time we do a a flip, a strip flip, we have to couple of stakes in context. So we're doing, I mean, I'm. Yeah, I I every time I'm contacting them, I'm thinking of the burden on the cities to have to come and mark everything.
So let me tell you the um the process on our end. When a blue state ticket is called in. Our admin staff gets it first and then. Uh, the admin staff prints off all the tickets every single day, puts those tickets in the box for the blue staker to take out. He goes to each site, marks it, write comments on it on the each sheet of paper, turns the paper back into the admin, admin. Logs it into the Excel spreadsheet. And then uh files that paper ticket and keeps it on file for three years. Imagine twelve thousand, that's how many frames, twelve frames. That's just in one year. So that was, that's, that was how we've been doing it for years. Uh, our um, we came across this software, local logics, which uh we discovered everyone else is using. And we didn't know anything about it. Uh, so we researched it uh and it does. Uh, bulk of the admin part of the job. So. Uh, now what happened? We just signed up for it um in November.
We're gonna save on filing cabinet.
So this is.
Don't worry, they have plenty of people that needs tours over there.
So this is all paperless and when someone puts in a request, it automatically goes electronically to local logics. They. They catalog these things. They notify our. Uh, admin and our blue stakes. And they just get on their phone, they go out market, they can just click a box like completed, they can write comments if they want to. And then um and then it closes out on its own. Then automatically sends notification to the ticket requests are saying it's been complete. And then our admin staff doesn't have to file it. Is there? Okay, okay. And then um. And we don't have to keep, yeah, we don't have to keep file. We don't have to catalog it, nothing. So it saves. We had to do something just because of the increase that's happening there. And and that was a logical way. Obviously, he doesn't take work away from the blue stakes marker, you know, the person marking it, but. It does save a lot of time on the admin side. Right, so. That's cool, so.
Go ahead, sorry.
All right.
Uh, well, it is it is being shared, well, at least not mine.
This is a situation to figure out.
It's being shared. It just has, doesn't have the actual.
Okay, anyway.
So can this party outside?
Was this the next slide or? Yeah, that one.
Okay, so this one.
So these are the things that Public Works has done over the past two years to improve customer service. Uh, one, and you've been a part of this, is the fat soil grease control program. This is where we updated the ordinance. To uh specifically talk about fat soils and grease in the sewer system. Uh, we now have something in place where we didn't before. And as you heard earlier from the sewer district, that is an issue. But we we view this as we want to be an advocate to help restaurants to understand. Um, the risks that they can put on themselves if their own sewer backs up. So we could proactively give them resources, information. Um, that's what we want to be is more of advocate, not a, not a strong-handed. We're gonna shut you down. That's not our goal. So this this helps, gives us the tools to do that. And that that was a huge improvement. Uh, bulk water fill station, massive improvement there. The. It's hard. We only have a limited number of meters, temporary meters that go out to uh for construction sites. A lot of this is construction water. And and because people don't want to wait or they don't have a meter available, we run the risk of people just hooking to a hydrant and just filling out themselves. Uh, now that there's a station in place, they can uh go twenty-four. Yeah, that was the other problem is that. Is it public works was closed and they want water on the weekend? Yeah, they don't get water or they're just gonna go find it themselves. So this get the twenty-four seven access. Uh, to water is paid for at the time that they get the water. So.
They're always busy too.
We don't, yeah, it is.
Always, always.
Now that we have a full water fill station. And we have binds in place because we really don't want people using our fire hydrants. What can we do to minimize or eliminate completely the use of fire hydrants?
So what I would suggest on that is you put out uh. Put out something in a magazine article uh to or or on Facebook or both. And let residents know if they notice anyone who's not a city employee looking to fire hydrant, just call Public Works. And we have the after hours.
Take a picture of them.
Yeah, and we have, we have a twenty-four seven, you know, on call even after hours, they can call even after hours. And we will respond immediately if they're if they're there right in person. If not, you know, if they can get us a picture, then we will follow through.
On that cell phone, they're calling you on.
I think if we can, in a way, sort of deputize residents to kind of be aware.
Video call. Look at this.
You know, a lot of time now, they can help us out.
With every crazy video call, the whole fire department shows up. What are you doing?
Okay, so just a thought, but if. If we put something on Facebook and on in the magazine to help watch out for this. Do you, will we get a better result of catching the people who are doing it illegally? Or are we gonna empower a bunch of people to go, oh, my gosh, I can take water out of a fire hydrant and start doing it?
I think you'd include in there. We could talk about the risk on the drinking water system, you know.
And the fine.
Make it a public health issue.
There's a fine attached to it.
You notice your your water turning brown? That means someone is legally connected.
Campering with your fire hose.
Yeah, we we could, we could make it in a way that people will want to then help keep their water clean.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
Good, this is good. It's because we want, we want to stop that. We do.
On the previous slide two was the floodplain management. So I uh last year I. Um, attended a training for a full week on floodplain management. So I've got a better handle of how. Floodplain management should happen um just on a national level. And we do have an ordinance that describes floodplain uh requirements. So um. We have improved our ability to serve customers that that may be facing um floodplain issues. So far, right now, there is no one built in any of the floodplains in the city. So, but at least we have good knowledge now on knowing how to handle that. So.
That's another.
And customer service, I would say.
Could you do something educational on what it means to the city if you have a lot? Start letting people build in the floodplain?
And where they all are, like where it all lays out, like an identifiable, this is floodplain.
Yeah, make that look so dry.
Oh, it's not.
Also, the Federal Motor Carrier's Safety Administration decided to um. To change requirements for commercial driver's license folders for. People wanting to get a commercial driver's license. They are required to do an entry-level driver training. Now, this is very similar like driver's ed, but even if they've had driver's ed. Uh, if they want to get a CDL, they still have to do an additional level of entry-level driver's training. This is mandated throughout the nation. So the this is something that would have adds cost and time to the city. Uh, from what we've seen, there's not, there aren't very many people who actually offer this training. Um, and those who do are commercial, commercially paid businesses. Uh, mostly truck driving companies and they charge large amounts of money because they can. And, you know, it can take five or six weeks. All time just to get through the training. Um, our, one of my employees in Public Works took initiative to. Ask about becoming a training center exclusively for our employees and um. And got approved to do that. So now we can offer the training to our own employees. For no cost, but certainly time um on the clock, but no cost. And that's been a huge benefit. Um, to the city because it's lower cost.
Can we offer it to other city employees, like in other cities? For offer to them?
They can do the same. Other cities can do the same for themselves. Yeah. So I have noticed even just recently, um, a neighboring city. Uh, had to send a new employee out to a place that said, we'll give you this government discount. You know, and they ended up having to spend uh twenty-six hundred dollars and took five weeks out of his time. So each employee, imagine that, you know, spending that much or more.
I'm wondering is, do we want to market this to?
So all I'm saying, no. Shut that down for anyone else. I mean, that's the fact of the matter is, we're improving customer service on our residents. This is less than our residents have to. They don't have to pay anything now. Now, the bigger challenge, though, is getting employees. Who are willing to hire on, knowing every time a commercial driver license um regulation. Uh, comes on, it makes it harder for people to even get a CDL and hold a CL. And so it makes it harder to hire employees and that's maybe a separate issue, but that's, so it's, it's always been a challenge. So this was just the the latest and this is how we accomplished, you know, getting over that hurdle.
Great.
Our fix-it requests in the past, we had a software that was. Hard to, well, they had some inefficiencies in getting reporting in in our employees. Having to scroll through numerous uh fixer requests, whether they were completed or not, trying to find one that's not completed. Uh, and some would have that request on their. Uh, computer and some would not. And so um we switched software companies to this um. See Click Fix by Silver Plus and it has streamlined efficiency incredibly. So.
What's the average time between a submission and a resolution?
The uh average now depends on the department and the request, right? So if it's asphalt concrete, um, if this is a basic small pothole, that's not a problem. But if it's like I got a bunch of sidewalk, uh, that's a tree is torn up, that's not something we're gonna be able to just do right away. Um, and those typically take a week or two uh on average. Uh, all of the other requests um are pretty much within a day or two, they're done. So, yeah. Uh, but that's a nice thing with this software is the reporting is a lot better. And it escalates to, uh, it will, we each request automatically is assigned a deadline. If they don't get it within that deadline, then the notification escalates back up to to me and then even Brody. So we can kind of see what's going on here. So, so much, much better management with this. Uh, and the uh even on the uh customer side. When they get a request, it automatically sends them notifications of what we're doing. We input what's happening. They know it at any time. So it's much, much better on there and to get information.
You can see the requests on on that, what are open.
Yeah, yeah, for other requests too. So, yeah. Um, another improvement is this customer portal for water use. This is for our secondary water. This is uh, this is a state requirement. That we let our secondary meter, secondary water users know how much water is flowing through their meter. So this software from Aqua Media was uh developed so that we can do just that. So each customer has a portal that they can get on to and and see their water use. Um, this is not online yet, but we've been working uh with the company. Uh, in anticipation of having an online this uh this water season. Sweet, so, okay. Dark sky lighting, we just started doing that. And this is the type of uh light fixture that we're doing for all new developments. Uh, any areas that we are retrofitting, we will use that. And to, unless it has to be Cobra. If we retrofit a Cobra, we'll put a Cobra back. So.
No idea what that means.
I like the names.
Oh.
Me too.
Your all the lights on. It's where that head just comes straight out on a hole and shines just.
Straight down.
Straight down.
Like a Cobra snake. That makes a lot of sense, actually. Now, okay, well, now I know what we're talking about.
That's the actual word for it.
So, uh, Robert, does uh, does you not manage one ninety-three all the lights on there?
No, Syracuse City does. Um, yeah.
Even while I get, yeah.
Anything inside our city limits, we do.
There's like, there's one light.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, no, it's not dead. It's just.
Oh, it's 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 like.
It's so blue and bluish purple and.
Oh, is that right?
Blind you.
We're gonna fix it.
You see, just like throw like, you know.
What fix it request?
I'll say it.
I didn't know it was on.
Do the request.
Is this not how we do it?
I I would be confused on that too.
You've seen it before.
Oh, yeah. It's like, why is that one weird?
My wife, she was like, why didn't you guys allow those things? I was like, well, I don't think we allow it. There's like one there that's.
I'm not sure.
You just put the wrong bulb in.
It could have been one that was knocked down from an accident.
Uh, it it is like.
Just put up.
A magenta, purple, blue.
I mean, it is.
It is bad.
Yeah, okay. Storm and look cleaning. We just got the uh new uh truck to do that. So that's a big improvement. The RV dump you already know about. Uh, big improvement for where it was before with the strip. Some of these you already know. Drop presentation. So uh Utah State University had asked me to do a presentation on how Syracuse handled the drought. Um, and this was a presentation that was open to all the whole nation. So.
Dropping this like it's not a big deal.
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
Some kind of.
So we did that. So that was done. The whole nation.
That's good to hear.
So it's on recording. They have it on website, so people can refer back to it.
It's not a big deal.
Whatever.
Normal day in the day of life, Mr. Robert.
You can, you can get his autograph after the meeting.
Right, moving along.
Uh, sewer assessments, um. This is a rapid assessment tool. That's what the rapid assessment is for. So this sends a saw. Sound waves down through the sewer pipe from Manhold, Manhold to see if there's. Any loss in capacity in that pipe. So if the capacity, if it doesn't receive sound waves, it knows there's a blockage. So it was just a, this is just a fast way to assess the sewer system.
You don't have to climb in there.
The right.
Do you have to put this to?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a microphone and a receiver. Okay, so we rented it and then we did that in twenty twenty-one. Yeah, and did the whole entire system just to see what the health of it is in a, you know, in a fast without having to. Camera every single line. That takes a lot of work. So this was a fast.
Technology is a beautiful thing.
Hmm hmm. We did the crosswalk, pedestrian crossing. That was seven hundred south. Um, okay.
Just FYI, the district does camera their mains every year.
A tower appears to be a. That that tower is not. That's, so we did do this. This is within two years' time. So that tower came down and then the new one went up. So.
That's an actual photo.
Yep, as actually, actually.
What if it's metal? Still timber?
Or.
Or.
So uh echo reservoirs pictured there. That was when we had the lowest level echo on record. Uh. And then the tank below it was the first year we used that secondary water tank. Uh, or excuse me, what used to be the culinary tank, we converted to secondary. We opened the hatch and cleaned it out, got all the, so we do that every year is clean the tank out. So we don't have a bunch of sediment down there.
Cool, nasty job.
The top one is replacing the traveling screen in Jensen Pump House. Uh, not replacing the screen, uh repairing it and cleaning it up. Uh, below that, it's small, but you you recognize this was uh during the drought, each week I put um. Well, how much water received, how much we used so that we could kind of track it and keep that information out. And then the pictures on the right are uh just repairing water lines. So this is our customer service. So. This one's geared more for the streets crew, the common things that they see, streetlights hit. Uh, the lower left is the tree that buckled the sidewalk up. Um. Um, there's paint striping, new asphalt, uh tree trimmings, cracked ceiling. So.
And Jensen.
The ponds. This one's all environmental related. So our environmental division does ditch cleaning. Um, the lower left is uh before and after of a of a spill. That was an oil spill.
Um, who spilled oil?
There was a contractor.
Oh, I think I heard.
Came and spilled a lot of oil in front of a house and we got, this was a fix-it request and we responded on it. And we did find the company for doing that. Uh, that can uh top one right that the cursor's on is uh the sewer line that was an emergency repair. We discovered uh while this North Davis Sewer District was lining pipe on four thousand west by Antelope. And this was our, this is a concrete pipe. And as David had mentioned earlier, uh, concrete pipe just gets chewed away. From hydro sulfide gases. And this is a clear picture of how that. Uh, happened on that section of pipe. So that got replaced.
Syracuse underworld.
Vision three, third vision, this is last, and uh talks about our infrastructure replacement plan schedule. Um, no surprise, our infrastructure is growing um over time. So from just the last two years, you can see uh what's been happening and and. And how much more is growing. Look at those two are, you know, the two water lines on top. Uh, that's really taken off quite a bit. Uh, our roads is the black and the yellow streetlights. Those are pretty even, but still growing. All of them are growing. So. This chart is looking at road miles and street lights put together. So the roads are blue, the streetlights are yellow. Um, uh, the lights are divided by ten, just so that they can fit on the graph. So you set the multiply timestamp on the number. But uh what it's also showing is how many miles of road per employed, full-time employee. And the average, city average for comparison cities are sixteen miles for full-time employee. We've been running about eighteen. Now the bar's on the right for the eighteen. So we've been running about eighteen. And we've actually been doing really good with keeping up the things with eighteen. Then about twenty seventeen, we kind of jumped jumped up to about nineteen. And we ended up at the peak at twenty twenty-one of uh about twenty. Uh, but we added, you added a full-timer um in and right after that, and that brought it back down to eighteen and. A half. So that's good, but this is where, you know, as we continue growing, you know, there's a a potential for another. Um, in the, you know, next, probably with the next year. To keep that at the eighteen, which is pretty much our level of service. Does I have a five-year plan? I'm just showing the the first year of the five-year plan, which is what we're in now. Um, and as you know, it just shows each. Each column for what fund uh each project is coming out. I like this because it shows uh. Like a ten-year history, I guess, almost like eleven now. Uh, road rehabilitations in the city, almost every single road, a lot of roads have received some kind of rehabilitation. Uh, or planned uh or it's on the five-year list. To receive some kind of surface treatment or reconstruction. So the ones that really don't have much happening are the, a lot of the little uh local subdivision streets. Some of them are new though, too. Still water, for instance, is still relatively new. Master plans. We have master plans for all of our uh infrastructures. So transportation. Transportation was twenty fifteen. That'll be next up to uh update. Um, which is already budgeted for this year. So we'll get that one going next for refresher. And then after that, we'll get the secondary water on because that's the next. Figure also with with our road system uh changing as much as it is now and our secondary water with our new reservoir and the meters. Those are very timely to get those going uh next in line. So. Then here's the grants we've acquired over the past couple of years. Actually, I think it's just been the last year. Oh, yeah. So you remember that software, the fifty-five K for the customer portal? That was that secondary water software from Aqua Media for customers to see how much the secondary water is getting needed. Uh, that was actually grant, so we paid. Uh, that was actually grant, so we pay nothing. There was no match or anything like that. So. Yeah.
We all love free money.
Then this is my last slide, it's just uh goals, yeah, so four, four things. One is a new regulation from federal level of EPA on all drinking water systems. Is to inventory all water laterals for lead. Now, this is not on the city side. Well, it is, but it's also extends onto the private. Side too. So this could be very uh intensive um for all. Drinking water systems to deal with. Uh, we know in Utah that uh in nineteen eighty nine, regulation was no, no lead was allowed to be installed after nineteen eighty nine. So we're looking at houses that are older. But that's something we can uh work toward. I'm basically letting you know about that. So that as we get started into that, if you start getting phone calls, wondering what's going on. We're just complying with the regulation to determine uh if there's any lead and in water lines. All right. So we'll get a plan of action together. I'll, I'll probably let you more as we get that uh wrapped up and ready to go. We have until October sixteenth, twenty twenty four to complete that. So we got a little bit of time. Our second one, our facility maintenance operates in our water division. So um. Uh, for efficiency, if we wanna improve some efficiency going on. I feel like it makes sense to make facility maintenance its own separate division in Public Works. They can still stay in Public Works, but. This is not adding a person at all. It would be just changing the crew leader to a supervisor and they just work in their own.
He's the only one in that area.
So it would just be creating that division for them. They just have a different focus than water. So. Uh, and then the streets maintenance staff, as I mentioned, I wouldn't say uh right away. But I, as infrastructure grows, it's probably something we gotta look at within maybe the next year. Just maybe one, one person to keep us back at that eighteen. And then uh building space, probably within the next five years, we're probably gonna have to talk about building space in Public Works. Which, which may be just uh, we could be looking at temporary situation uh would kind of are now, but um.
Can I, can I? Uh, open this up a little bit more for you? So I, I would suggest honestly, each of you go over there and get a tour of how everything's laid out right now. There literally, when I say bodies upon bodies, Mr. Daryl Webb has his own office. He is current, he's like a foster dad over there. He's currently sharing it with four other, and almost five other people. Like, one of our employees has a chair where he can put his muck boots next to and all the study stuff on top of his boots. And that's all he's got, the only space he's got. And they're creating an office of, using the open space upstairs to put in one team and then moving another team. They are literally like, there's muck boots everywhere, nowhere to put them. They did get some lockers, which is great, but it's. It's crazy.
We're making, we're maximizing the use of our space. And yeah. Storage area, so we cleared out uh some space. And, and giving them a little bit more space so they can uh put their belongings and just. They don't spend a lot of time in the office, but they do need a place they could sit down as a team and say, okay. Let's line us out for the day and make sure we have a, a place to.
Need some search capacity.
So we actually talked about one of, like, uh, one of the things looking forward in the next five years or so, maybe even turning the. He mentioned turning like the wash bay into a separate office and then building another one out in the middle of the complex, cause there's space for it. Which would make sense, but man, they are just stacked up over there. They don't even. Wanna, being in agriculture, we're muck boots everywhere. And one of the worst things, like, if you talk to most of them, I leave them at the door. Because they're always so nasty. These. And because they're embarrassing, your, your muck boots are just embarrassing. You don't want anybody like smelling them and stuff like that. They're just everywhere. They don't have any space for it. And when you don't have enough space for even just muck boots, that's a problem. That's, I can't. And they all get along so well, thank goodness. They don't like fight each other over space. They're all just like, eh, but. They're definitely making do with it, but that's definitely an understatement. But you guys should go over there and see. And that I'm not just exaggerating, like, go take a look for it for yourself, like, they are well overdue for a little extra space.
Yeah, yeah, you're always welcome to come over, sir.
How long has that been kind of the situation?
Uh, it's been recent though, I'd say. And, and I've still got four full timers uh positions that I have not hired yet for that secondary water uh meter install. We're waiting to get some equipment. In which is starting to come in now. So we'll probably start hiring this um spring. And I really, anyway, I, I'd say we're probably at our max capacity.
I think they're just so used to making do with what they got that. They're not complaining, they're not, they're making do with it. But it's, I'm like, yeah, how long have you guys been like this? It's like a, wow.
We do. Um, so I'm not saying today we gotta do something, it's emergency. I'm just saying. We have some time, we have some time, maybe after you're done with the fire station.
Oh, that's fine. That's like thirty years now.
Thank you.
That's it.
I've written down a few of the notes for things that you want added to the next gen. Are there any other things you wanna bring up?
I just need to ask Robert if I filled out my fixers ticket right.
You literally did it just now.